We've got seven o'clock. I'm Shannon Rutherford, the town planner. This is a town plan and zoning commission meeting for June 12th. I will do a roll call to start us off. Patrick Carrier.
Here.
Scott Halsted.
Here.
Matthew Hotvogner.
Here.
Liz Sanford.
Here.
Ina St. James.
Here.
I will note for the record, regular member, Mike Gribulis is absent this evening. And we have alternates, Matthew Bandle.
Here.
And James Rockleff.
Here.
All right.
All right. Thank you, Shannon. Hello, everyone. Welcome again to Town of Farmington Plan and Zoning Meeting. Today is June 12th. We're going to go through new business items. We have public hearing items and the planners report. We are so Mike Gribulis is out. We will definitely need to assign alternates. Are you gentlemen? Okay, if I just assign as we go? That's okay. Perfect. All right, so. Scott, do the legal notice, please, or is there a legal notice? No, because these are all continuations. So we are going right into it. Okay, so this is the new business portion. There's no input from the public. And let's get going. All right. The first is a sign application. For Michael Serena. At property located at 1024 Farmington Avenue. It's for Claudia's. And who do we have?
I believe we have Mike here.
Okay. Oh, okay. Thank you.
I do also just going to make a quick announcement that the second public hearing item two, 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 Talkeet Notch Road will not be discussed this evening. The applicant has requested a continuation. So I'll just make that announcement sporadically throughout so that if anyone calls in or is here. They know that 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 matter will not be discussed this evening.
Thank you, Shannon.
Mike, please run up.
Hi there. Yeah, 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 yeah.
You see on a computer screen. Hey, everybody. It was a little loud, sorry.
And your name and.
Oh, Mike Serena. Representing Claudia's Gradgrind shop at the new location will be 1024 Farmington Avenue in Farmington.
Right. We're almost there.
Almost there.
Yeah.
Stick that close.
And you're here for the sign application.
That's correct.
Tell us what you're doing.
So we have a new sign that's getting brought on the. What would you call that? That hole that's out there? What's the name for it? Just a side pole that faces Farmington Avenue. There's like 13 different names for it, but yeah, that would be that one right there. So it's a double sided sign. I'll be facing Route four. And the other one is actually a vinyl overlay on a three panel window. Kind of had a couple of issues with trying to find a spot for a sign because of the way the roof is designed. It's kind of told by the sign company, it would probably not be the safest bet to put one up there because of how, you know. The way it would work, you have to put an L shape on the roof and this and that. If you hang it up here, it could fall. So we decided, what about just covering this window? Because behind that is actually just. What is this? Basically just drywall that was never finished. So it's a lot more aesthetically pleasing than it would have been if it was just an empty window. So. Yeah, that's pretty much it. I just basically did the main one with the Claudias and then on each side is just a picture of a sandwich with no lettering or wording or anything on that, just to kind of fill it all up. And that's pretty much it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
We will go through the commissioners for questions. All right, Mr. Matt.
Sorry, I was with you. Oh, I was just, I was curious for the pictures on the other side here. So. Oh. So there's, there's going to be one main sign in front of the building, which you just saw on the window. Is there two signs in either end of the property? Can you just describe those again for me?
Oh, yeah, yeah. So on each side of those, we'll actually over here, sorry, there'll be like a sandwich on each one. So it was just kind of like something to sort of fill the space. So I was like, all right, do we do red? Might be too much red. And then with my sign guy said, well, maybe if you put a nice picture of a sandwich, that would be kind of cool because I saw it from some deli in Southern.
Got it. Okay, great. Thanks. Yeah. Is there any signs, new signs on the road or?
No.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, great.
No, no. It would just be the sign underneath the existing.
Yeah.
Okay, and that as well. Okay, great.
Right.
Good. Patrick.
Yeah, so those, the ones on the side windows are going to cover the whole window, correct?
Correct, yes.
That's the point. Okay. Yeah, no questions, no good questions.
All right, Scott.
Yeah, no questions for me. Thank you.
Liz? No questions. Thank you. James?
No questions.
And Matthew?
No questions.
All right. Not about the sign, but when are you opening up?
I know it's been taking forever, right? Well, let's see, if everything goes well, just give you everybody a heads up. So the 24th will be our last day at our current shop. I actually cut the lease a little earlier. We're supposed to have it until the end of December, but. Yeah, I didn't really have any plans for it because it needs to be redone completely. So I just wanted to have made more financially, it wouldn't made any sense to keep it. So. If everything goes well, we'll be closed for about two weeks. So the following week we'll be moving all the equipment and I'll have inspections with health. Building is, and I think you guys too might be before that though, but then. Fire and building and all that. And then the following week is 4th of July, so we'll be closed for that. So if everything goes well, I'm thinking July 12th or 13th.
Great.
Fingers crossed.
Oh, that's awesome.
Yeah, it looks really nice in there. I think you guys are going to like it. So.
Great.
And we'll be open a little later too, which is nice.
That's right.
Yeah.
Hours. Good.
And everyone's like, why only three o'clock? I'm like, trust me, head up.
Excellent. So yeah, thanks again for coming to one of us.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Absolutely. James, do you want to be a voting member?
Sure.
You want to be?
Yeah.
I'm just teasing you, but I forgot to start with that. All right. Any last minute questions for the applicant? We're good? Okay. All right, so. We need a motion and a second. To approve this application as presented.
Okay. Excuse me. I make a motion to it. Should clear my throat first. I make a motion to accept the sign application, to approve the sign application for Claudias from Michael Serena of. For Claudias at 1024 Farmington Avenue.
Second.
Okay. Everyone know what we're voting on? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. All right, you are all set.
Uh, thank you guys so much.
You're welcome.
Have a great night. Thank you again.
Shannon, are we super loud or is it just?
You're fine.
Okay.
Okay, I thought so too.
Yeah, it is. It is a little bit, but we've had the, I'd rather have a little loud than we've had the reverse at times in here. So.
Okay.
Talked about packed in here for the, the last few minutes.
You can sit.
A lot less people to bounce the sound off of.
Right. Yeah, it's bouncing off the wall too.
All right, moving right along. Matthew, would you, is it okay with you to be a voting member on this one? All right.
Sure.
Awesome. All right. So the next is also a sign application. For new player in town, I think Farmers Insurance. It's for a property located at 1825 Farmington Avenue in Unionville. And who do we have?
We have Chrissy Brackett of Pharaoh.
Okay.
She's on. Twice.
She's online.
Yeah.
Yeah, twice.
Oh, twice. Just trying to. Okay.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
There you go. Yep.
Hello?
Hello?
Hello.
We hear you.
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Sorry, I tried calling in, but I don't think it was coming up for you. So hopefully you can hear through my speaker. We are proposing signage at Farmers Insurance at 1825 Farmington Avenue. Thank you to the commission for hearing. This proposed signage application. This is a corner unit, so we will be proposing a window sign of the logo and name of the agency. Also hours of operation. And we are also proposing an awning sign. Which is just vinyl added to the existing green awnings. So sorry, just to make that clear, that will be one awning sign on each elevation and one door sign on each elevation. And they're all vinyl. There is 45 linear feet of frontage and the proposed sign amounts to 35.3 square feet. Also, the vinyl will be mounted on the outside of the glass for the door vinyl. And if you have any other questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Thank you. All right. Well, let's go through questions. Matthew, you have any questions?
No questions.
All right. How about you, James?
Questions.
Liz? No, looks very nice. All right, Scott.
No questions.
Patrick.
Uh, no questions.
And Matt?
I'm all set. Thanks.
All right. So, okay, this is an easy one, pretty straightforward, right? All right. Is this business in already or?
I believe they are open already.
And that's where the cleaners used to be, I think, right?
Yeah, I think Magic Touch it was called.
Awesome. That's good that we have a new tenant. All right, so based on. No questions. We need a motion and a second, please, to approve this application as presented.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to approve the sign application for. Farmers Insurance at 1825 Farmington Avenue in Unionville as presented.
Second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, it's unanimous. Thank you for calling in. You are all set.
Thank you. Have a good night.
All right. Next one is also an application for signage. Oh, good, for a new restaurant coming to, excuse me, 55 Mill Street in Unionville. For flavors of Nawab, Nawab? Oh, my gosh. Okay, I'm going, I'm very excited about this. All right, James, are you good being a voting member on this one?
Yes.
All right, and thank you. Who do we have, Shannon?
I believe Kelly is on the phone.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
If you can go ahead and explain your application to the commission, please.
Sure. I'll start with, there is two existing awnings on the building now. We've cleaned them and we're going to paint them black. They're, they're, they are black now, but they're going to be painted with a fresh coat. And then we are adding white vinyl on to them with the flavors of Nawab. It's going to be the same copy for both awnings. The size of the awning is 173 inches by 32 inches in height. And there was two of them. The second part of the signage is for a monument sign. It's going to be vinyl placed over the existing sign, monument sign. It's two sided. It's for, it was the old Panoma, Panoma Peaks location. So it's, it is as pictured there. The size of that is. I think we're also replacing with white vinyl the 55 on the top of the sign so that it's a little cleaner and brighter. And that's it.
Good. Thank you. All right, Matt, questions for the applicant?
No questions. Thank you.
Sure. Patrick?
Uh, no questions. Thank you.
Scott?
No questions. Thank you.
Liz? No questions. James?
No questions.
And Matthew?
No questions.
Not related to this sign. Do you know when they're opening up?
No, I know he's anxious. I think he told me he wanted to be open by July 1st. That's why he was wanting to get in on these meetings.
Okay, that's great. Yeah, very nice. We have a new restaurant in town or is coming. Great. I do not have questions about the sign proposal either. It looks nice and sharp. Hopefully it will be well intended and supported. All right, commissioners, we need a motion and a second to approve the sign application as presented.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the sign application for flavors of Nawab. Pardon?
It is Nawab.
Is Nawab, okay. Sign to approve the sign application for flavors of Nawab at 55 Mill Street in Unionville as presented.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, it's unanimous. You are all set. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Good job. All right. Moving right along. Next one is an application from Miss Porter School. Located at 49 Main Street also. Nine Mountain Road, and this is an application for special permit for daycare use and schedule. And yes, to schedule public hearing with a recommended hearing date of June 26th, excuse me. So we're accepting this application this evening. We would like to make a motion to accept the application, please.
Okay, Liz Sanford, I'd like to accept the application from Miss Porter School for 49 Main Street. AKA Nine Mountain Road. To accept the application for a special permit for daycare use and schedule a public hearing with a recommended hearing date of June 26th, 2023.
Okay. And do we have a second?
Second.
Do I, actually I needed to, okay, James? Can you be a voting? Okay, thank you. Geez, I'm off today. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, application has been accepted. All right, the next item. From Metro Realty Management, Shannon.
Correct, ma'am chair. We're going to delay acceptance of this at the applicant's request. There is some additional information. That's needed in order to complete this application that we've discussed. Subsequent to the agenda being posted.
Okay.
So this is just going to get pushed and staff will continue to monitor the timeframe for that along with the applicant.
So no action needed by.
There's no action on this at all tonight. Correct.
Love it. Thank you. All right, now on to our public hearing portion. So thank you for folks that are here, folks that are online. We do have. Few public hearings that are being continued from prior meetings. During public hearings, the applicant gets a chance to present to us. The commissioners. Have a chance to ask questions and then we turn it over to the public for your comments, input. And support or opposition of the application or just questions. The first one is an application from Carrier Holdings, Inc. Like I said, it's a continuation from May 22nd. It's application for six lot re subdivision of Dominique's Court with waivers. And two lot subdivision with waivers of 114 Red Oak Hill Road, R30 Zone. Okay, so.
Yeah, I'll be recusing myself.
All right, so Patrick, you'll step out and then Shannon will. Okay.
I'll grab them.
Thank you.
Finished.
Yep. James and Matthew, you will both be voting members on this one. Okay.
Sounds good.
Great. We need twenty. Okay, sorry.
Uh, for the record, Brian Panico with Harry Colson, 876 South Main Street in Plantsville. So you'll remember from our last meeting. This is for a total of eight lot subdivision. So it's going to be six lots off Dominique's Court, two lots off Red Oak Hill Road. Just go through kind of briefly what the changes were in discussion from the last meeting. There were some outstanding engineering comments, some concerns about the detention basin and the outlet control structure design. Since that meeting, I've been working with staff, in particular Bruce Seer. To try to modify how that outlet control structure is going to work and how some of the pond elevations of different. Different berms are going to work to provide both water quality and the best possible decrease in runoff while still meeting all the other regulations. The applicant, as this was already an approved subdivision, had already started the construction of that pond, has already installed an outlet control structure. So I think in the latest correspondence with Bruce, the recommendation was to kind of see. If that structure, if we could somehow modify both the pond and that structure. To work without the applicant having to order a new structure and redo everything. And then there were some additional kind of housekeeping items in the report as well that, that we will address, that we have no objection to. So I think at this time. The only changes to be made are kind of those couple of little things with as far as working with staff on. How we want to best handle that outlet control structure. But aside from that, we have no objection to any of the other comments or concerns in working with staff.
Shannon? That you have a chance to review with Rose yet?
I, I did. So Bruce and I were reviewing right through the end of last week. And then it required us to reconvene this morning with our Director of Public Works, thus the delay in having this come out. And yes, the outlet control structure will be modified. So they, the, the comments are up on the screen. Most of what you're seeing here is clerical. With respect to the subdivision sheet itself. The same for the site development sheet, although. You know, they do have to continue to work with Connecticut Water in order to have water service. Both the top portion and the bottom portion of the development. So the two, the six lots that come off a copper mine that are known as Dominique's Court and the two lots off of. Red Oak Hill Road. And then Mr. Sears comments regarding the basin. In particular, let me see here, a stormwater report. The outlet control structure is shown, the latest calculation shows three 10 inch orifices. And they just, they do need to coordinate to see if those can actually be cored in in the field. Or if a new outlet control structure needs to be installed. That's the developer's issue, but that was really the final. Item that we had that was of, I'll say a concern, engineering concern that needed to be addressed. We were able to run that through that with the Director of Public Works this morning. And thus we were able to issue the letter this morning.
So. With what you just said, you're. And, and the applicant working with you. And team, you're satisfied?
Correct. So addressing these, there's, I think, 20, 28 comments. These could be conditions if the commission so chooses. There's no objection to having those as conditions.
And the existing home, you're, you're not connecting. If to the public utilities, right?
So what we were requesting was a waiver for the water to that. It will be connected to sewer. We have done feasibility to show that we can do that. We know we can also connect water. The question is more or less. Will Connecticut Water allow us to make that connection or not? So we're asking for a waiver to not connect in the event that Connecticut Water does not let us do it. Otherwise, we would have to come back before this commission just to ask for that waiver again, I believe.
That would be a fourth waiver then. Correct, because we've got three, three waivers. That were itemized. We've got the. For the main portion.
The road width, yeah.
The road width. And the removal, no sidewalk.
Correct. No sidewalk on both sides. So that would be, is that one considered one or two?
Uh, no sidewalks required for the two. It's, it's once you get up to either four or five lots that the sidewalks required. So the sidewalk waiver doesn't apply to these two. It only applies to Dominique's. So there's the waiver for the roadway width. There's the waiver for sidewalk. Because it's a six lot subdivision. And then I had a waiver. For the pavement width. Here, because it did not appear that the pavement width was the full.
Oh, correct, on the Dominique's Court. Well, I think that in our last set. Of revisions, we did make that wider to what the, the requirement was. We had originally asked. For that to be reduced because it's essentially just one. Driveway. So you could see in this revised plan that Shannon's brought up. That would be what the requirement would be is 18 feet of pavement, I believe it is, all the way through the 150 foot. Private road as opposed to having the 18 feet to where the two driveways had split. And so as you can see, it's 18 feet of pavement, essentially just to one house. It kind of seems over. Overdone. And just adds to more impervious surface and more stormwater runoff. So that's what we had requested those three for. And. If staff would prefer to forego the waiver for the connection on lot eight on the existing house. We can do that and we can certainly work with Connecticut Water and. Hope that they allow for that connection and if not, come back before staff or the commission, but.
That's just like commissioners, because that needs to be itemized because the waivers require five, six vote. So.
Right.
So right now there's four waivers, two for the top portion and two for the bottom. As if I'm understanding things correctly.
Correct. That's what we were going to ask.
Okay.
And. This is what happens when we continue meeting. Sorry, is there. I know the neighbors, surrounding neighbors were concerned about water and blasting. Do we know if you have to blast for the two new ones? Or you don't know yet?
Um, it's unclear. It's likely that there will probably be some additional blasting. Particularly in the area of the road as they continue to put the utilities in. We do. It, the site does tend, does actually drop off and grade the further back that you go. So a lot of those houses are actually being filled. Whether the ledge is deep enough in those couple of sections that it won't interfere with the basement foundations or not is another question. And that's unclear at this time. My, my guess would be that lot five is likely going to be very little blasting just because the amount of fill brought in. Lot four, probably on the, depending on where the ledge falls on the garage side. They may need some additional blasting as well, but that'll obviously, they'll have to modify their blasting permit and notify different neighbors if necessary and, and kind of go through that process again.
Okay. Let me turn it over to the commissioners. And please ask away. If there's any confusion, if you need clarification, Matt, I will start with you.
Yeah, great. This is a little recap for me, right? So we've already approved the four lot division. Has the work already, you mentioned work has already begun. So work has, has work already been gone on that plan?
Yes.
Okay. And now you're essentially asking us for, to approve two more lots and there's a lot more engineering to do that.
Yeah, so we essentially kind of took that initial design. Went back through it. From the road perspective, it wasn't a lot. We basically just extended that road. We did make it wider and did make the right of way wider. As the regulations required that. And then the detention basin got a little bit larger as well. On the Dominique's Court side. And then we also added another one on the Red Oak Hill side, which. Takes both stormwater from actually both subdivisions just because of the way that the grades on that site are. So. Again, when we had done this initially, we had the Dominique's Court subdivision as basically one standalone. And that's what you, you guys approved originally. And then we had actually done another. Set of plans for almost a mirror image of that. Off of the Red Oak Hill side with four lots as well.
Right.
That was approved by Wetlands. And in working back and forth with the, with Connecticut Water, Connecticut Water didn't like the connection between the two. So we worked with staff and came up with the. Best outcome of, well, if we extend and put two lots here, then we have the existing house and just one additional lot. So it's the same number of lots. Just configured in a different way that. We felt worked a little bit better and that Connecticut Water would be more admirable too.
And, and how many lots? Need to be on well if Connecticut Water doesn't agree with.
Just the one existing house.
Got it. So the other, the six lots will be on water.
Yeah, so currently the water main is shown to come through all of Dominique's Court. So it services all six of those.
Yeah.
And then we have a lateral that runs. Off of the cul-de-sac. And then through to the other house, the new house on the Red Oak Hill side. The question that came up, they don't like water mains running through private property anymore. They won't let us, let us do that. If you were going to put a water main in, it has to remain under pavement. That's what we were told. So by. Terminating and just having a lateral come off, the lateral is then going to the house. So that. Does, that doesn't have to be under pavement. So what our proposal originally was, was to have two laterals coming off the cul-de-sac, one for the Red Oak, the new house and one for the old house. Again, whether or not Connecticut Water will allow that or not is another, is another question. From our understanding at this point, what we've proposed. Would be approvable by them. Adding that additional. Lateral for the existing home is what's in question. And so. Essentially, if we propose it and they say no, then the house is served by the well that already serves it. But I believe that's what we would need a waiver for, correction, to have that house still be serviced by the well?
Correct.
Correct. So we're essentially asking for the waiver ahead of time so that if Connecticut Water denies it, we don't have to come back and ask you for.
And, and the, the main water. The water. Main in the Dominique's Court, that's going to all be under sort of public road.
That's under the private road of Dominique's Court. Yeah, yep.
Yep, okay. So stormwater. So in your opinion or your engineering opinion, is all the stormwater managed on the site?
Between the two basins, yes. Yep.
Okay. And then Shannon, we, the town agrees with. Okay. And Shannon, we the town agrees with that based on. The conditions laid out in the document that you pulled up earlier?
Yes.
Okay. No, no additional questions.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm going to apologize for this question in advance. I'm still trying to follow the waivers. So. If we could just run through sidewalks, I've got like the waiver for no sidewalks. Can. Can you just run through what the other waivers are? And maybe Shannon needs to do that.
So the waiver on the Dominique's Court side is for the pavement width and the. Is it pavement width or the right of way with actually pavement with meets it right away with done. So the right of way with is required to be. Fif fifty feet, I believe it is unless, you know, or granting a waiver. So once you get to six lots, the right of way with is fifty feet. The roadway width, I believe, is twenty two feet. What we had originally done on the previous application, since it was only four lots. You're at a, I think it was a twenty foot pavement width and the pavement width is the right of way with. So once you add more lots, that starts to grow. So. Again, when we transitioned from the four to the six. When we bump that out to a fifty foot right of way. So I think currently we're at thirty. We bumped that out to a fifty foot right of way, then just pushes your front yards. Back, which essentially would put all the houses closer to the trail, closer to the neighboring properties, which was the. Seem to be less desirable. So we're asking for a waiver to keep that at the thirty and we did actually extend the pavement with. To meet the requirement. So we do have a small shoulder, though it's not much, but it's all owned and maintained by the HOA. Regardless, so the homeowners association basically owns all of that property anyway. Yep.
Okay.
And then the second waiver on the other side of the road. The two lot subdivision requires a eighteen foot right of way. And an eighteen foot pavement with. Frontage is required to be a hundred and fifty feet for lots. So. That right of way has to be a hundred and fifty feet long by eighteen feet wide, and it would have to be entirely paved. So even though where the two houses and the two driveways come together and that would logically be eighteen feet. Based on where the existing driveway is and where it would connect to this proposed private road. It essentially means that the second hundred feet. Of that driveway is just serving what is lot seven. So we were asking for a waiver to instead of having that be eighteen feet for the pavement width for the entire length, since it's only serving one house. To go down to, we had shown it originally at ten feet, more like a standard standard driveway. So that covers those two waivers and then the water waiver and then the sidewalks was the last one.
I appreciate you run run through that again. Thank you. I'm I'm all set.
Okay, Liz.
That was very helpful. Thank you for those questions. Just to make sure. Excuse me. Well, I think that answered one question. Thank you.
Okay, Liz, James.
I don't have anything additional.
Okay, and Matthew.
Same. No questions.
Okay. The two, the, you're okay? All right. The Red Oak Hill houses will be similar. Or it's the same subdivision, right? So they're going to be similar in style and.
So the existing house will stay the same untouched. The new house will be of similar style. Yep, to to the rest of the stuff on the other side of the room.
That and I'm not sure. What to do with this, but I think I understand why you're here. We had some good questions in the prior meetings, good questions today. I just the thing that is a little bit unsettling is. The number of times you've been in front of us and it's good, right? Because we have a process in place. But it's, you know, we approved a subdivision and then comes back with another change and another change. Is is it because the terrain is difficult? Like, why do you think that's happening?
So it literally is a direct result of the Connecticut Water not wanting to provide the service. So if we could have brought the water main through and done the four lots on the other side, that would have been before you and. About a year and a half ago, and that would have been the end of it. Because Connecticut Water wouldn't let us do that. It basically made it impossible to get water to service. These these four lots. So that's why it's coming back. So obviously, the initial. Plan before you for the four lots, the developer had a contract on that one parcel of land. That all went through, that all got approved. Then the neighbor directly to the south of him. Broached that same developer and was interested in either selling some of his land or. Basically doing something of this nature. And instead of, again, instead of trying to go and. Make changes to that original four lot subdivision, we basically did something different just with that parcel of land. Didn't work out. Connecticut Water didn't let us make that connection. And so therefore, that's why the modification.
Thank you. Shannon, is that? Connecticut Water comes after us typically is that?
Correct. So typically, the through the design process, the engineers will reach out to the utility companies to make sure that service can be provided. So those conversations start somewhat in parallel to the design. And yes, that is the feedback. So the the issue is that. There's water out in Copper Mine Road that can come directly down Dominique's Court. There is not water in Red Oak Hill Road. It would have to come in from New Burton Avenue. Yep. So the length. The the length that that would have to be brought up Red Oak Hill Road, the developer has indicated as cost prohibitive. So thus he preferred to be able to drop it down through Dominique's Court rather than. Bring it up the couple hundred. I don't know. Is it about eight hundred feet or six hundred feet up?
Yeah, so I think when we had done the calculation, it was a total between going from. New Burton Ave, because it's on the south side of New Burton Ave. So you cross New Burton Ave, come all the way up Red Oak Hill. Then turn down the subdivision. It was about eight hundred and fifty feet, nine hundred feet of water main.
Okay. So. That was the driving, the driving reason is an inability to. Make that run of water main, which is what Connecticut Water had preferred.
Yep. So we have two waivers for Dominique. We have two. For two lot subdivision.
Correct.
I was gonna ask a question.
Yes, go ahead.
So Commissioner Halsted's question on waivers. Made me want to ask about, and you touched on this. So what happens to the lots if we deny the sidewalk and deny the pavement? Do the lots just get smaller? How how do I think about that in terms of this development?
Yeah, so we would basically, yeah, so we would basically just go back and re we'd have to go back and kind of redesign it. To make the fit to give it a fifty foot right of way. Add sidewalks into that fifty foot right of way and then stretch all of the lots. So they would just be a little more narrow. So basically, less you'd have the same amount of front yard, but less rear yard.
Yeah, that's a closer to.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, so it essentially just pushes all of the houses back ten feet.
Yeah, okay. And that section of copper mine doesn't have sidewalks at this point?
No, and being it, we felt that being at a six lot subdivision. That the traffic on that so is so minimal that if people did want to walk down that road. It's not, it's not a through street. It's not a main thoroughfare. They're relatively safe.
Yeah, but isn't a requirement, right? So we need to waiver our requirement. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Are we good for questions for now?
One other quick question. I noticed I either missed it the last time or just spotted it, but the the endangered species map.
Yep.
We are, you are no part of the hash mark. Nothing's there.
Correct. I think when we had done the, because this came up on wetlands, I believe it was like box turtle. Was the what came up. So the recommendation is to walk the cell fence, check for all of. Check for the turtles, pick them up, put them on the other side if if you find them, that kind of thing.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, commissioners. And we'll we'll do this again if you have more questions and comments. All right, this is a public hearing. Let's turn it over to members of the public. Is there anyone in the room that wishes to speak regarding this application? Or has questions? We're good. Okay, about online?
If anyone's called in for questions regarding the public hearing for Dominique's Court and one fourteen Red Oak Hill, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom and you will be acknowledged to address the commission. Again, if anyone has called in regarding the subdivision for Dominique's Court. Our Red Oak and Red Oak Hill Road, one fourteen Red Oak, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom and you'll be acknowledged to address the commission. Madam Chair, there are no hands raised.
Okay, thank you. And you one else here? No, we're good. All right, commissioners, before I close the public hearing, questions for the applicant? We're good? All right. So at this point, the public hearing is closed on this item. And we need a. Motion. So we can discuss, please.
Okay, do I if I make the motion, do I need to read each waiver or do I just? They as. Are those are now those votes? When I make a motion, are the waivers vote a separate motion or?
They don't have to be.
It's our decision.
Yes. Oh, okay.
We should also include the conditions outlined by staff. Yes.
Yes, absolutely.
So you can just so. You don't have to. So you can you can put it all together.
Okay.
Initially, or or you can break it out.
Yeah.
Okay.
When we may change it, right?
Okay, so. Okay, Liz, I would like to make a motion. Let me get my coffee anyway. Excuse me. I'd like to. Approve the application. By Carrier Holdings Inc. For a six lot re-subdivision of Dominique's Court with. The waivers detailed and. A two lot subdivision with waivers of. One fourteen Red Oak Hill Road, all in an R thirty zone. And. Including the, excuse me, the engineering. Recommendations.
Okay.
Did I get it all?
Yeah, yeah. Okay. All right, who wants to?
Second.
Thank you, James. All right, discussion. All right. It's a so we've had this application a few times as we heard. It is a little bit confusing. Hopefully, with all the questions, you know what we're voting on. Matt, what's your feeling about the two and two?
Sure. So I just I'll I'll go through my. So the six lots, right, is really four is already approved plus it existing plus one more, right? That's how in in my head it works. And I think that all, you know, makes sense to me and what the applicant. Presented to us, I think fits in the guidelines. Obviously, stormwater. Especially in this area, and we hear from residents in this area. About stormwater and and based on the conditions from the town staff, right? I think we should put all of those in. That sounds seems to me to be managed on site. The pavement waiver, I'm fine with. The I don't know if we're doing the Connecticut Water. One or not, but again, that one, it will come back to us, it sounds like anyway, or or not. I'm fine with that one as well. You know, the sidewalks one, I think principally say no. I think sidewalks are good for a community. And they enhance the community, enhance the neighborhood. I live in a neighborhood with sidewalks. So again, I think I'm a no on that one.
So you see, you you think we should break it up? By waivers? The vote? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, if that's if that's. If that's how the commission would like to go with those, otherwise, yep.
Okay. Anything else? You're good?
That's it.
Okay, how about you, Scott?
I I'm in a similar place. I think the description of the waivers helped, and I think a lot of them make sense. I'm I'm always torn with sidewalks because. Every every new development is not connected. You got to start the sidewalk somewhere. And we always say, well, there's no sidewalks anywhere else to connect into, so we're not going to do sidewalks. And so I I understand what Matt's saying and his concerns there, but I think the rest. With the town being satisfied with the the detention basins and how that's going to work. The only thing that's really questionable in my head against the sidewalks.
Okay. That's fair. Thank you, Liz.
I I understand most of I understand the waivers. I. Definitely like the fact that if if we do the waiver for the narrower. Driveway, that will lessen the amount of impervious surface, and I think that's a good move since stormwater runoff is a is a potential issue. Sidewalks. I'm a huge sidewalk proponent. I walk everywhere in this town and I love having a sidewalk. But I also find this to be a smaller. Area, and I think. It is a tough call, but I would I think I would. Prefer to not have the houses pushed that much further back. I just see that might be more of a potential problem with the. The trail and the neighbors. So but I I am a huge sidewalk proponent, so. Little divided.
Okay. James?
I mean, the plan itself, not a huge departure from what has already been approved. You know, so Matt. Pointed that out a little bit earlier. I could go either way on the sidewalks. I I I don't have sidewalks where I I live. It's a. I, you know, I'm walking on the road all the time in some quiet parts of the neighborhood. The fact that it doesn't connect to Copper Mine. Yeah, I don't know if it would be like more of like kind of like stick out. A little bit more. I think there will be plenty of space to walk around and stuff like that. So I could go either way and, you know, we can talk about that at some point, but everything else I'm good with. But yeah, not a huge departure from where we were at when we originally approved it. And my biggest concern with stormwater, it seems like that's all been.
Has to have the test, okay. All right. Matthew.
Everyone has great points. I don't think that the sidewalks are are necessity. I do think that this neighborhood is very walkable without sidewalks and still being safe. As everyone mentioned, stormwater has been addressed and with the staff's recommendations that will, you know, be adhered to. So I I'm not really. Feeling the need to, you know, single out the sidewalks. Think that's where I stand.
Okay, everything else you're comfortable with as presented. Okay. I think the location of the subdivision being right along the bike trail. I I too feel like the sidewalks, and I don't know, it's too it's more pavement than we need. But. We're kind of three quarters either or, and then you, Matt, I don't know. Would you feel comfortable voting the way it was? Structured or?
Can I ask Shannon a clarification question on site? So the regulation. How many lots in Farmington? Do you need to sort of trigger sidewalks? I'm sorry to put you on the spot here, but I'm just like, I'm I'm sort of getting to like what's in the regulations and we have, right? We've talked about having these regulations for a reason.
That's right. I'm I'm smiling because I had it open and then I closed it. So so the subdivision regulation in section. Four, it's table two discusses lots right of way with and sidewalk requirement. So right through five lots. No sidewalks are required. It's when you get up to six lots. It's it jumps from six to twenty lots. And sidewalks are required. So that's we're right on that threshold.
Got it. And one of them is an existing house, I guess.
I mean, this is a perfect number, Matt, right?
Yeah, that's no, it's good to know. Listen, I think I like. I like Commissioner Hall's point, like sidewalks got to start somewhere. I mean, am I going to vote no for the whole subdivision because of that for? Essentially, five new lots. I I don't think so. So. We'll find if we just want to keep keep it together at this point.
Shannon, clarifying question. While you have that sidewalk regulation, I know. We have moved to, is it, am I correct in saying that all new sidewalks need to be four feet wide? Is that correct or?
I I believe our town requirement is five foot sidewalk.
Five foot. Okay, I knew it had been. Bumped out in certain areas, but I thought it would be okay, five feet.
So it's five feet closer to the trail if you want to think about it like that. Okay, I'm good. You know, I'm I'm good with the sidewalk waiver at this point.
So the motion and second stays? Yes.
Sounds like it. Yeah, with all the waivers, right?
Okay, that's what. All right.
And the conditions.
And the conditions.
Yes.
Conditions of the engineering, yeah.
All right. All right. So, um, so we have a motion, we have a second, good discussion. Are we ready to go?
Yep.
All in favor of this, uh, Carrier Holding, Inc. application?
Hi.
Hi.
I.
opposed, I think that was unanimous, okay? All right.
Thank you.
Ryan is in the phone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. And you will talk to Shannon? Yes.
Yeah.
And it was very, very nice meeting you, seriously. All right, uh, the next item.
Patrick, can you even do next?
Oh, yeah, Patrick.
I'll go, I'll go grab Patrick.
So, um, Calco, yeah.
Well, it's just gonna be table.
Okay. Do we need a motion for that? Or does it?
Good, continue.
Yes, go ahead.
No problem.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
I'll be two places at once, Shannon.
Okay, thank you. The new guy is back.
I'm back. Wasn't here long.
All right. Yeah, all right, public hearing, uh, the second item is an application, uh, again, continued from May, uh, from Calco Construction. And, uh, this application is being continued, Shannon?
Yes, please.
June twenty-sixth is okay?
Yes.
For now, okay.
For now, yeah.
So we need a motion and a second, please, to continue.
Okay, uh, make, like to make a motion to, um, continue Calco Construction's application for six lot subdivision of two twenty-two Talkeet Knatch Road with waivers R eighty zone and continue it until June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
And we just need to
Hi.
Who is James? James, okay, James.
Yeah, he's all over it, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Um, all right, the, uh, last public hearing item in front of us is, uh, an application from Bulwark LLC. Um, and, uh, James, you want to continue? All right, we'll have James continue.
It's, uh, Madam Chair, just point a clarification, Mr. Carrier, have you reviewed the record regarding this application?
I have, yes.
You did?
Yep.
All right, thank you for, uh, looking out for us. All right, so this item is a continuation also, it's an application for change of zone and a, uh, special permit and site plan approval for self-storage facility. Welcome back.
Good evening, Madam Chairperson, members of the commission. My name is Robin Pearson. I'm an attorney with the firm of Alter and Pearson in Glastonbury, Connecticut. And I appear this evening on behalf of the applicant, Bulwark LLC, and I'm pleased to be here. And hopefully, we'll be able to show you that we've responded to all your comments and you'll feel comfortable making a positive decision on this application. So with that, I'd like to let you know, uh, and reintroduce our, our team. Uh, here this evening on behalf of Bulwark LLC is Matt Morris, one of the owners. Dave Pulley was here last time, Matt's here this time. And in terms of our presentation team, David Ziyex and Scott Hesketh on Zoom should be of, are here to go from FHA, Hesketh and Associates, our civil engineer and our traffic engineer. Uh, Donald Jones is here by Zoom. And he is with Donald Jones Consulting and he will be the operator of this facility if it is approved and has extensive experience in the area of, um, self-storage facilities across the country. Um, with us again this evening is Mark Dean, who is the architect. Uh, he's with, um, Dean Architecture and, uh, he too has much experience with, uh, self-storage facility design. So what we're going to do, I'm going to give you a quick recap, um, just to make sure we recall where we were on this. Um, Dave Ziyex will then talk about the revisions that have been made to the site plan, landscaping plan, um, and some responsive information, um, since our last evening together, and he's also going to talk a little bit about why, again, for you, this, uh, development is particularly suitable for this site and not necessarily for other types of commercial developments. Um, Don Jones, again, I mentioned, is our consultant, our, our, on, uh, the operation of the facility, and he's going to talk about the need for climate-controlled self-storage in this area. Um, and also the benefits that it provides for Farmington and frankly, some area communities as well. Mark Dean will go quickly through the revised architecture. Um, you have a slightly, you have a changed elevation in front of you this evening. Um, and I believe that's been responsive to your comments and staff comments. And Scott Hesketh is again, as I said here, by Zoom, should you have any traffic questions for him? But we did go through the traffic issues at the, um, last session. Um, I'm going to just make some concluding remarks as to why I think this is in compliance with your plan of conservation and development and the criteria that you have to consider when you decide whether or not to approve the zone change and, um, and special permit. Um, I'll start with a quick overview as, as we believe we left matters with you at our last session. There are, of course, two applications before you, the zone change from R eighty to the commercial zone C one. Also, a, um, special permit application with site plan for self-storage under the warehouse use category, which would allow that with, uh, as a use within the C one zone. So, uh, as you're aware, we have, um, a number of units, four hundred plus self-storage units in a four-story climate-controlled facility. I want to underscore for you again that we did spend a lot of time in front of the Inland Wetland Agency. And that review, two reviews in fact, had significant implications for how this design ended up the way it is. And it's important, and you know that, that you do have to take into consideration the wetland, um, decision when you make a final decision on a special permit. Um, you may or may not remember that we went through two applications before the Inland Wetland Agency. Uh, our first application was denied. Can you go to just, uh? You've got it, Shannon, can you go to, go, if you would go to the next photograph, the next slide, which is the revised one, and then I think the next, next one after that. Now, next one after that. Yeah, that's good. Um, it's a large site, it's approximately five acres in total. I think you can see the outline of the entire five acre site, only about half of this site is currently proposed for development. Um, we went to wetlands with a self-storage plan that would include development on both sides of this large piece of land. And on the I'll get my bearings, on the westerly side, it was going to be one-story, um, self-storage units. And on the easterly side, where we're currently developing or proposing to, to develop, it was going to be three stories of self-storage. Um, the comp, the square footage was comparable, it was just that it was laid out across much of the site. Um, inland wetlands made it clear to us that they were not going to approve that, and they did not. They said specifically that, um, they did not want to see development on the westerly side of the site. And they said, look, we're giving you a prudent and feasible alternative to your plan, and that is make the development a four-story development on the easterly side of the site. In addition to some other things they wish to see us do. So we did that, we, uh, reapplied. And based on their instructions, all the development is on the easterly side in a four-story location. And they approved it on March first of this year. And however, they were adamant that the conservation restriction that was on the east side had to be extended over the entire west side of the development so that there would be absolutely no chance for any future development on the site. Um, we kicked a little bit, uh, but we didn't get very far. And that was a condition of approval and we've met it, and that's why this design is the way it is. And I bring that to your attention both because I know it's something that you're gonna consider their, their direction, um, when you take this matter up. But also that explains why, because I know height was an issue for you in terms of its appropriateness for this area, and we'll get to that a little bit later. But, um, I just wanted to underscore again that a lot of time went into um, getting everything over onto the east side of the site. And it has some very positives for the town going forward. It, uh, restricts the amount of incursion into undeveloped area and it makes sure that for futures, for future use, if this application is approved, there will be no development on that west side of the site. Um, and it's not all wetlands over there, it's not that it couldn't have been developed, it was just that this was something they wanted and this is what they ended up with. So to, uh, just remind you of the development that does exist in this area, on the south side of Colt Highway is, uh, those are all, those properties are commercially developed. On the westerly side is the excavation site that Tilcon has. The zone is EE. It's called, uh, Earth Excavation Zone. That's Colt Highway number two two two. Uh, next to that, going to the east is, um, a C one zone, same zone as we are proposing this be rezoned to. And that is a, uh, landscaping, um, entity. The address is two two three Colt Highway and it's Cumberland and Coal, I believe is the name of the facility, but it is a commercial facility at that location. Then further to the right of your screen and, uh, to the, that would be to the east is the tractor retail facility. That's not a C one zone, it's a B one zone, but it is commercial and business in nature. Um, all good reasons why rezoning our parcel from R eighty, which is a single-family development uh, uh, category, and certainly I think it's fair to say a location that's highly unlikely to see someone wanting to come in and develop single-family homes at that location in the future. Um, but we believe based on the uses that are in the area that this is certainly a, an application that makes sense for you to consider favorably. On the northerly side above our site, the, uh, R eighty zone is on the westerly side. That's undeveloped, it's single-family. I do believe the owner, one of the representatives of that facility of that property was here at our last hearing and had no objections, but it is, it is owned R eighty. Next to that, moving towards the right is a town-owned land, also develop, uh, also zoned R eighty. And then further to the right is, um, uh, also town-owned land in the PR zone. And up in the corner, you can see the beginning of the complex that comprises the Hampton, Hampton Inns and two ninety-nine Colt Highway, um, both fairly sizable developments in the area. Your plan of conservation and development specifically says on the future land use plan that this site should be rezoned and used for commercial. So we believe this proposal before you tonight will leave the town with an attractive and extremely low intensive commercial use, which will, uh, meet a real need in the community and is, um, specifically responsive because self-storage is typically used by people in residences, that it'll also be responsive, particularly to the need residential needs of the community and area. Um, potentially area towns as well. So it's also a use that is definitely of interest and handles the need where people move, downsize, move into a community, into multifamily developments. Um, there's often a desire to have a place to be able to store your, um, your prized possessions, things you care about, and this is a high-end self-storage facility, it's all climate-controlled. So that's sort of different from some others you might have had experience with, which are not at all, and one might not want to put one's grand piano in there or antiques or paintings or anything like that. Tupperware, yes, but other things maybe not, so if, this is a distinctive kind of self-storage facility. Um, I'd like to sort of paraphrase what I think your concerns were. Uh, you told us that we needed to work on the height issue. And we have reduced the height to make sure that it complies with the C one maximum standard of forty feet. Uh, in response to uh, the comments as to whether this height is comparable with the height of other uses in the area, you do have, um, a staff report which looked at I, I'd say it's fair to say comparatively all, um, developments to the northeast, specifically the Hampton Inn uh, hotel facility is thirty-six point two feet in height. And two ninety-nine Colt Highway apartments are thirty-nine feet in height. Um, Colt Highway apartments are three stories, but the height itself is thirty-nine point two feet, or thirty-nine feet, I'm sorry. So at forty feet, I would say, say it's fair to say that we are comparably sized in terms of height. Across the street is different, but in terms of whether this is acceptable or appropriate or harmonious in this part of town, we feel strongly that it is. Um, you also asked us for an exterior treatment that might be more typical of Farmington. Um, at the same time, you did acknowledge that the commercial uses across the street are I guess I could say pretty rugged in appearance, they're not, you know. Um, well, we'll leave it at that. In any event, we did take that into consideration and we toned down the appearance of the building. And we added a, uh, a brick course, uh, real brick across the, uh, the, the bottom of the building, which our architect will go through to really anchor it and, and give it some substance and relate it to, um, other aspects of Farmington's development, which does use a lot of, of brick. You had questions about the driveway access, which I believe we answered. I don't have anything new to add to that, or our team does not, but as I said, Scott Hesketh is here. Um, the site lines are compliant. We've underscored that this is a low-traffic generator. If you're gonna have a commercial zone here, this is a great use um, that will really have subdued, um, traffic generation. And ultimately, DOT has jurisdiction over this because it is Colt Highway. And of course, if you have any concerns, you should share it with DOT. Um, we're in that process, we can't tell you, um, whether it'll be approved, but we assume um, there should be no issues with being able to get through um, our DOT rev- review. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Dave Ziyex, just to go through the specifics of the changes that we've made. And, uh, I'll circle back at the end. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman and members of the commission, my name's Dave Ziyex, I'm a professional engineer with F A Hesketh Associates. We're located over in East Gramby. And, um, Robin did a good job in, um, summarizing where uh, where we are. But I just wanted to go over a couple of, uh, my own comments. Uh, there were some, uh, um, staff comments, uh, that we received last time, and also we listened very carefully to uh, the comments from the commission. And, um, really for as far as the changes, um, well, I, I did want to give you some numbers on that, that issue of the conservation easement, just, just in case somebody had some questions regarding the actual numbers. The site is, uh, four point nine nine acres. And, uh, the conservation area actually turned out to be three point five eight acres. And so that's, uh, this development is, uh, sitting on one point four one acres of the, uh, the overall property and the, and the conservation easement actually, uh, I guess my pointer's not gonna work on this screen. But the conservation, uh, area actually wraps around the, the facility on all three sides, the highway being on the obviously on the south side. So, uh, as Robin pointed out, um, as far as any expansion of this facility or in addition of some other use on the property, that's not going to be, uh, really possible to do that in the future. Um, looking at the, um, the layout sheet that, that we, uh, have in the set, um, which is up on the, uh, screen right now. A couple of things I wanted to point out was that we, uh, we added a mountable concrete curb to the east driveway. Remember, the east driveway is right turn out only. Uh, the main driveway in the center of the site is the, is the The main driveway in the center of the site is the, is the principal access to the property. Everything is clockwise around the building. When you leave, somebody could actually go out the main driveway if you went to the office and didn't, didn't go to your storage units. And needed to leave, you could do that instead of going around the building, you would be able to go out that driveway. But I don't see too many people doing that. The principal circulation is around the building and you will leave at that easterly driveway, which is exit only and right turn only. But the staff wanted to see us put a multiple concrete curb there as well that would further prohibit people from making a left hand turn out of there. And we're working with DOT on the final design of that. We'll review it with staff once, once DOT is okay with that. It's pretty typical. I did point out to the staff that I, I've done about five of those in a row and every design is different. The DOTs can't seem to make up their minds exactly what they want that to look like. So but we will have one there. But the landscaping and as far as the, the other changes to the layout plan, if you recall, we discussed the HVAC units for the building. They will not be on the roof. They will be on the ground. And there's only three locations for them. One tucked way up in the northeast corner of the building in the back and then over on the northwest side of the building where Shannon's spinning the pointer right now, there's two locations up near the dumpster locations up there. So you'll see, you really won't be able to see these units from Route six. And we added to the landscaping plan on that easterly side, we added some buffer plantings, just to add some additional buffer. I don't think you'll be able to see them anyhow, but there's some additional buffer plantings there. And then along the foundation wall on the front, I think there was a comment maybe from one of the commission members. Could we add some additional foundation plantings across there as well? And we've done that in the landscaping plan. So you'll see that between that one story brick facade now that's there on the first floor and then the additional foundation plantings, I think you're going to have a really attractive face to this building, looking down on Route six. So that's really it as far as the changes to the plans. There were a number of the labeling changes and things that staff had, but nothing that would really cause any layout changes to the, to the plans. As Robin pointed out, we have, I think the, there's a physical practical limitation to this property in addition to the conservation area. And that is, I think we discussed it last time, is there's very limited areas on this property to install a full, certainly a full size septic system. So our, our needs are very, very small. We're going to have bathrooms on the site for our, our one permanent employee that will be here when the site, when the facility is open. And then if customers are here and they need to go to the bathroom, they'll be able to go. But the amount of sewage generation from that is very small. So that works. Anything bigger, you know, if you were thinking, well, what are the other uses you could put on the property, you know, certainly not a restaurant or anything like that. You would never, never succeed in getting a septic system for those types of uses on this property. And then of course, we have the traffic situation on Route six. We think we have a safe driveway design. But on the other hand, we have a very, very small volume of traffic using this. Again, something that was a high traffic generator probably wouldn't be, wouldn't be appropriate. So we feel that the, the, the use that we're proposing is, is really a good fit for this property. We have practically no sewage generation and very small amount of traffic, as Scott pointed out, Scott has got pointed out in his traffic report to you. As we talked about it last time too, is that we, we have an application before DOT for what'll eventually become a driveway permit. And that we meet the, the driveways, sightline standards in both directions. We've done a full analysis of that and provided that to staff. And and as far as the, I think the circulation, the way we have it and with the left hand turn, a right hand turn only on the, on the east driveway, I think that's a really good design. And the sightline is very good at that location. Looking back, you can see all the way back to the Hampton Inn traffic light at that location. It's just in the right spot on the curve. So all in all, I think we have a good safe design. We've made some changes. You got a really good landscaping plan. And I think you're going to be pleased, I hope you're going to be pleased with the changes to the architecture to go along. And if you have any other technical questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them. Donald, who is in the virtual world, is going to do some presentation on the market analysis. Are you there, Donald?
I see him down in the right hand corner.
I hope he's not driving.
Can you hear me or no?
Yes.
I'm not driving. No. Can you, can you hear me or no? Okay, very good. I'm not driving. I'm sitting in a parking lot. So, but I appreciate everybody taking a time this evening. What I'm sharing today will not take very long. But what I wanted to share with you is since our last presentation, there've been three individuals on our team who have each gone back to the market, just to try to true up the question, is there too much product self-storage in the area now? With now going into a lot of numbers, I would share with you that within three miles of the, of the subject site, we have roughly fifty five thousand population there, based on industry standards. We're short somewhere between a hundred and sixty five thousand and two hundred and seventy five thousand square feet of self-storage, which would be the equivalent of somewhere between two and four properties. This particular property, sometimes we look at the gross size, which is seventy nine thousand two hundred is what's being proposed. And we say, well, that's too big. Just as a reminder, we don't get to use every inch of those building, that building for storage, because we have hallways, offices, stairwells and elevators, plus vestibules for people to use to move in and out. So we anticipate we're only going to get about fifty to fifty five thousand rentable square feet of storage. And again, based on the numbers that three independent individuals all ran, again, we believe there's a substantial amount of product that's missing in the market. Again, somewhere between a hundred and sixty five and two hundred and seventy plus thousand square feet. There's always questions too about why do we need the storage? And so I think what I wanted to do is kind of close up a little bit and just share some of the whys. So we have people moving around the country all the time. Sometimes they need to move into an apartment in your particular case, while they wait for a house to be built. So they'll use self-storage. Sometimes they already live in an apartment. And because of winter and summer conditions, they take their winter clothes and they'll storm when the summer comes up and vice versa. We have people who enjoy the holidays very much and they'll have a lot of stuff that they want to store, but they can't get rid of it. And, but they, they have it and it's not because they're gluttonous. It's because they just enjoy holidays and they, they store their things. Doctors, lawyers, all use self-storage for their offices. I don't know if you know it, but pharmaceutical reps aren't allowed to store, aren't allowed to store their products in their home. They're required to have a self-storage, is required to be climate controlled. It's kind of required to be secure. And they're only allowed to store a certain number of products that they take out. So they use that as well. I think there was made mention the other day about one of your group who uses self-storage personally. We have our parents who age and when they pass away through pregnant, through our, our own personal senses, we decide to store their things and we always say we're going to give back to it. And sometimes they do and sometimes they don't. College students come back and forth all the time. That's what they do. Teachers who are in school and they're required to remove their items at the end of the school year and store them until the next school year. They use self-storage. And I could keep going on and on, but storage isn't just about the, the aforementioned word gluttonous. It's because we have needs. And your particular community has needs and the, the math relates to those needs. This is an incredibly good project. You have a lot of people who have put a lot of their effort, their professional knowledge into this, trying to give you the absolute best product we possibly can. You can see on the map that they're illustrating that we have a couple of extra spaces in the market. We have a U-Haul. We have a couple of life storages in the market. These are all REIT. They're very high powered locations. What they do is they, they have their metrics that they're required to operate off of throughout the country. Location doesn't matter to them. They use their exact same metrics, no matter where they are. And that's true for all of those locations. This particular location, if we were to come in to manage that, we would be managing it not as a REIT, but as an individual with the same personal influence and personal integrity that your, your owners who, who are coming in to try to buy this property, which would be Matt and Dave. They've spent a lot of time on this, trying to make it exactly what they want is this is their home, no different than it's your home. And they have a very, very personal feeling about what this could do for your community. And that's why they've put forth the extra effort and put forth a great team to do that.
If I may ask a question of my own. I'm not sure I heard you say it, but in the information that staff put together, it looks like these facilities, the ones that were noted in the staff inventory are where there is an occupancy rate. It's quite high. And I don't know, in your experience, can you just give one or two assessments of what the current market looks like? Are, are these things doing well? Are there a lot of vacancies or are, for instance, I know there's one you looked at in West Hartford, and I don't know if you know anything about that, which happens to be climate controlled and is very similar to this and is four stories also. Do you happen to have any idea of what the status of that is? I know they're building it out now.
We have a, there's a brand new facility, which is out, actually. I think that the blue ring on here represents a five mile radius. So I want to be, I want to help you with two things. The orange line represents one mile, green line represents three, five line represents, or the, the blue line represents five miles. Within this market, the fifty five thousand population is related to within three miles, your, your green ring. When you go out to the blue ring, we're talking about somewhere around a hundred and fifty thousand people. And so the, the number is so high, it becomes irrelevant. The property immediately to your right, the extra space is there was recently built. The, right now, there's two things happening. The occupancy is growing faster than what their projections were. And the income that they have projected is, is much higher than they had projected. Normally these are set up on a three-year lease up. This one they anticipate be in full in eighteen months. So it's leasing up twice as fast as what they thought. The other facilities that we checked, the extra space that's within a three mile radius, just to the right of the highway, I, I eighty four. That location is a large facility, multi-story, a hundred percent occupied or I don't want to say a hundred percent. Nothing's a hundred percent, but well north of ninety percent. And, and again, it's doing very well. Every facility that we marked is at ninety percent or greater, which is that's where we want to actually operate. We want to be able to tell customers, yes, we have something. We want to be able to provide that to them. But we don't like to tell customers no. And so everybody's operating kind of where they belong. Based on the numbers again that we ran, some of them are assumptions, some of them are through facts based on our conversations with the operating owners. But they are at ninety percent or better across the board. There was one in Avon that Extra Space recently purchased. I don't remember where it is on the map. That particular facility in Avon was a hundred percent occupied for the better part of seven years straight. And Extra Space came and bought them.
Okay. Thank you very much. I just wanted to put on the record that, hey, there is a need that's clear. And, but there's so much need, you know, you coming into the market isn't going to change that. There's still going to be a need to be met by this. And even if this is approved, that need will still exist. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mark Dean. I'm principal at Dean Architects. My office is in Dupuy, New York. So when we were here last time, I think I gave you a brief overview of the building. And just as a reminder, the building is approximately seventy nine thousand two hundred square foot. And that's, as Donald mentioned, that's gross square foot. It actually has a net rentable area of fifty six thousand square feet. It's a four-story structure. On the first floor, there's a small office, two loading areas, two elevators. And there's stairs at each end of the building that chew up some of that gross square foot. The additional floors obviously don't have the office. They don't have the loading area. So they're dedicated solely to storage units. And there's a total number of four hundred and sixty three storage units in the facility, ranging from five by five, twenty five square feet to ten by twenty five, two hundred fifty square feet. And it's divided equally among different sizes throughout that range. The majority of the, of the discussion was regarding the exterior aesthetic, both the building height and I believe the overall aesthetic of the project. So we went back and took a look at the exterior. If we could pan down to the renderings.
Do you want to start with the original?
Yeah, we'll start with the original. So this is the, this was the first one we presented. And so that building, that main roof, even though it averaged under forty, that main roof was, was above forty, was about forty two, forty three feet at that front entrance. Again, it averaged under forty. We had some bright yellow doors. We had some colors that weren't, weren't well received. So from there, we, we toned down the exterior a little bit. We removed some of the windows. We toned down the doors, but we kept those sort of architectural features of the higher roofs at the corners and in the center. And so if we go down to the next one, this is what we have put together since this last meeting and what we're proposing tonight. We brought back the windows in the corners. We kept the toned down color version of a sort of a neutral gray. But I think more importantly, we pulled down the roofs at the corner of the building and at the center of the building. And this does one of a number of things. First of all, the maximum height of the building in front is forty feet and that's that tallest roof edge that you see. The building slopes to the back by about thirty inches. So our average roof height now is below thirty nine feet. And our maximum height is forty feet. In addition to bringing those roofs down, it helps sort of break the building into a smaller scale. It presents the building as a three-story building, based on that center entrance piece, based on the corner pieces. In addition to that, we added that a full floor, full height of, of brick to the exterior. The brick brings in, is responsive to some of the aesthetic in this area. And it helps bring it back to what we see in other buildings throughout this region. But also it, it helps bring the scale of the building down. Again, by breaking up that brick as on a full story, it helps visually reduce the building, I think, almost from a three-story or from a four-story to a three-story, the way it's configured now. We've, we've done a lot to scale the aesthetic of the building down so that it doesn't present itself as a big, solid four-story wall. We added a large fascia to the, the, the roof line of the building. I don't know if that's something that you can zoom in on or not, but not, not a big deal. But we added a large fascia. It's a detailed fascia. It stepped in. And again, this, this is a aesthetic that we see in this region. A nice heavy fascia with a little bit of a detail to it. And, and again, overall, we broke up the elevation into smaller pieces, smaller components. So first floor component, we've reduced the force, the fourth floor window. So it now appears to read as a three-story structure. We took the four-story roofs off and pulled those down to be equivalent to what we see on most of the three-story buildings. So I think that was really the majority of what we did to help bring this back to a more comfortable scale and more presentable that as you drive by, you don't see a big four-story building. It really presents itself more as a three-story building. There's no question on the roof elevation now, based on the fact that our maximum height and I, and I just, the small caveat is there is an elevator penthouse in the back, but that doesn't count towards our, our, our roof average. That elevator penthouse in the back that you won't see from the road is forty two feet. It's just a six by nine area. But other than that, we've done sort of tremendous strides to help shrink the building down physically and aesthetically.
I have just some findings I would like to make in terms of compliance with your regulations. But if you would prefer to go to staff, I'm sorry, to comments or questions first, that's up to you.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. Okay. I took a look at the standards that you're supposed to consider under section twelve with regard to the granting of a change of zone or special permit. And there are seven of them. I'll quickly go through them, one and two, I consider together. They say that the existing future character of the neighborhood in which the zone and or use is to be located will be protected and that adequate safeguards have been taken to protect adjacent property and the neighborhood in general from detriment. I'd like to point out for you that the commercial character is already established by what's happening on the south side of Colt Highway across from this property. Your plan of conservation and development does designate this on the future land use map as appropriate commercial development. The property to the north of our site is a town owned in two instances. And you now have a wetland requirement, if this is approved, that the whole western side of this site cannot be developed and must be in a conservation easement. If this is approved, of course, that conservation easement will be filed on the land records. And then finally, that this development, we do believe we've made the case that it's an extremely low intensity development in terms of its use and therefore its impact on the neighborhood. Items three and four talk about that traffic circulation within the site and the amount and location and access to parking is adequate, and the road network has to accommodate what's being proposed. And I would just say that we've made the case that the internal circulation works. Our driveways work and have been improved with the additional mountable curb that's now been added. DOT has ultimately jurisdiction over this, and we do believe that the, you know, in and out is achievable, given the capacity of Colt Highway as a roadway. Items, item five says that the basic design of the proposed user building and its overall physical appearance must be in general harmony with the character of the surrounding neighborhood and will not serve to blight or detract from abutting residences or other property. And I think we've made the case that this is now a well-designed building, feels appropriate. The height is definitely comparable to, but we have not, it's certainly not out of harmony with the taller developments in the nearby area, including two ninety-nine Colt Highway and the Hampton Inn. And I'd like to just point out that we've been through, this is our third hearing. We had two hearings before inland wetlands, when these plans were being proposed. We had, we've had one night of public hearing already here. There has been no opposition to this development from the public. So it's not of a concern to the public, which is something, you know, you are the ones that decide this application. But there are not issues that others are, have raised that have been brought forward to you. Item six, where the application proposes increased building density over that permitted under the existing zone, and I would say this large building would be allowed under C-one, but not allowed under R-eighty. We have to, you have to be able to find that this increased development can be accommodated without detrimental impact and that adequate safeguards have been taken to protect the natural environment. And going back to things we've already talked about, the conservation restriction certainly does that to a great degree. The fact that there's town-owned land undeveloped to the north does that to a great degree also. Finally, item seven, that all required public services will be readily available to serve the proposed development, and the answer is yes. You can attach any conditions you feel are necessary to the, not to the zone change, but to the special permit application. And I'd just like to leave two other, three other comments as you consider that this application, and that's the plan of conservation and development does ID this as commercial. There's no requirement, which I think is interesting, that in your own regs, that says compliance with the P O C D is something that you should consider, but we've pointed out that it does comply. And that certainly the C-one zone is appropriate, given C-one right across the street. And I think also something for you to consider that we've pointed out now also is that if you want to develop this for commercial and your plan of conservation suggests that you should want to do that, this is probably one of the few types of development that would work on this site. A lot of that is because of the constraints. We now know that only part of that site can be developed, but also that it would be very difficult to have a higher intensity commercial development on that site if only because you're not going to be able to serve it by septic. The site design complies with C-one zoning, as does the height of the building now. And finally, I do believe that we've satisfied the staff comments that have been raised. We've worked with staff through this process. You have engineering comments, and Mr. Sears indicated that, that certainly his remaining concerns were minor and they could be addressed through changes to the plan. And I do believe that planning staff also had nothing outstanding in terms of concerns. So with that, we hope you can approve both the change of zone and the site plan special permit. And we look forward to answering your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. You ready?
All right. Well, first, thank you so much for taking another look at the design and seeing how it fits into Farmington, right? And thinking about our town and what sort of surrounds this area. So I appreciate that. So I just got a couple different questions. So the, the, the building height, just to confirm that for me, so the maximum height is forty feet. And we've been provided drawings that sort of prove that out. Is that, is that fair to say?
Yes, yes.
Okay, great. So just a question, architect, I appreciate the brick part of it. I was just curious, is the blue and the yellow, is that somehow attached to this brand of storage? You, is it, right, like U-Haul, you can kind of sense it's like orange, right? You know, why the blue? Like, why, why choose this type of color in this area of Farmington?
Can we go back to the rendering? Yeah.
Why not two levels of brick or three levels of brick? And again, just the thought process on the design of the building.
Well, I'm going to definitely turn this over because it's not my proposal between Mark and, and Matt to answer that question.
Great. Thank you.
Yep. Mark Dean, Dean Architects. So the blue is, is definitely a branding color. And to, to bring the brick up higher didn't make a, a lot of sense to me as we started putting these together. The, the sort of neutral gray color and the blue band are a metal panel. But it's an insulated metal panel. That's three inches thick of foam insulation. So we have a very high R-value with that material. As opposed to the brick, we have to add, we have to do a composite wall behind that and put insulation inside the wall. So not to mention the cost of the brick itself makes it a little bit more prohibitive to take it up. When you go up to a certain height, you have to put relief angles in in order to carry the weight of the brick. So it, it really became sort of on a constructability end. It was a good point to, to stop the brick at.
Got it. Great. Thanks. And, and Mark, while you're there, so the elevators, how do I think about the elevators? Are they passenger elevators or sort of large?
So there, there was called a, a service elevator. It's, it's in a passenger elevator range. It functions like a passenger elevator. They're ADA compliant. Anybody can use them, but they're just more heavily rated and a little bit larger cab size. So they're rated where standard elevator you get on in a hotel is maybe twenty-five hundred, three thousand pounds. These elevators are rated at five thousand pounds.
Typical for a storage facility.
Typical for storage.
Okay, of this nature.
The cab, the cab dimension is again, a little bit larger. It's about five and a half feet by eight feet.
Got it. Okay. Okay. And, and just last one, I, I was, for who this for, but the building, the distance to the front, this is the farthest back the building can go. Is that fair to say? You can't push it back any further from the road?
Right. Okay. In order to get the driveway all the way around the building to get access for the patrons and for fire access, you really can't push it back in.
Got it.
Well, and I would just like to say, we're constrained by wetlands.
Yep, understood, understood. Just wanted to ask, and just two more for me, quick commissioners. So just to confirm the use, a lot of storage facilities rent out trucks, rent trailers, sell us, moving materials, moving boxes. Is any of that going to happen? Will there be people coming and going to purchase items outside of storied, storing their stuff?
There'll be moving boxes within, within that rental office, but I don't think there's going to be any truck, truck rental or anything on, on this property.
Okay. My last one, just on signs. I drove up and down this road a bunch over the weekend. It's, it's tricky, and I, I, I think it's just the, the way the site is. But when you take a right out of there, the only way to get back to eighty-four is to do a U-turn into another business, unless you have the patience to go all the way down into town and then go into Plainville. So it's tricky, because I mean, you don't control when people leave your site. I don't know if there's a way to put a sign that says, do not, no U-turn on Colt Highway or something, because it is, I don't know what the signage looks like when people are taking a right, but again, unless you have that patience, the, the only way you're, you're just taking a U-turn in one of those businesses. So again, this is in a high sort of traffic area, but I don't know, from a site plan perspective, if there's anything that could be done with the flow to prevent that, because it's, if people are going to do, every time you drive down, you're going to turn back around, you're going to go to fi- five corners and you're going to go to eighty-four. It's going to happen every time people leave the site, because that's the quickest way to the highway. So I, I don't know if you could think about the site plan, or if you thought through that, or any additional signage to prevent people from doing that, because it's just going to happen and people are going to have trailers or bigger trucks, so.
Yeah, we did, excuse me, Dave Zaiex with the F A Hesketh. We, we definitely have to take that in consideration every time we have these turn restriction driveways, they'll be heavily signed as the staff require or request that we, we're going to have multiple curb in there. Really force you to make that right-hand turn. And yes, there is a little bit of inconvenience with it, but we're faced with that more and more on, on our commercial sites where we have a lot of times right turn in, right turn out, that's all you get. And, you know, so.
Yeah, I mean, just, like a question, is it better for people to take a left from the site than have them do a U-turn off-site on another business? And is there a way for your site and you to manage that on from your customers and versus having another business now deal with your customers making a U-turn on another business?
I mean, you know, we, we felt that the safest condition was to, was the restricted driveway to right. Could we convince DOT to let us go with a full driveway to make a left? We have the sightline, we meet all the technical requirements. So if the, maybe if the commission felt strongly about that in your discussions, we can entertain that. But as of right now, and our feeling is the the right-hand turnout is, is the quote-unquote safest operation, but, you know.
No, it's, it's probably the safest looking at this site, but I'm thinking for the town, right? And that section of town, like if I was the DOT, all the cars are going to go and make a U-turn. Like, it just, I, I did it ten times. Like, you're just going to do it. So again, I don't have an answer on what that should be.
You know, it's the, the common sense, like you're, you're, you're approaching it that way. We've, I've, I have personally argued with people that in particular, at the district office, the DOT, the same thing, you know, why, why, why is that? And their attitude is that's, that's, that's not their concern. You know.
Is there a site plan so you can manage, again, your customers taking that left?
Well, we have, we've done everything physically that, you know, norm, using the, the normal design standards with a very severe right turn, proper signage, things of that nature. So the design meets that type of, meets the standards for that type of restricted driveway. But then you, then you could overlay the, a practical discussion on top of all the technicals, you know, safety discussion, you know. Like I said, we have no personal problem with, with people being able to make a left-hand turn out of there. But it's been our experience with DOT that they're, they're going to probably balk at that and you know, we, I, I, I don't know, you guys could talk about it amongst yourselves, whether or not you want to go down that path during your deliberations with special permit, this to at least have us approach, approach DOT to have that discussion. But I would, I would ask you not to restrict it that way, because we, we probably would fail with DOT to, to make it a full-service driveway.
I'll just, that's one more. Do you think it will fail because they'll want you to put in a traffic light?
Oh, we would never qualify for a traffic light, yeah.
Okay.
Using the warrant system, there's, there's no way we would ever get a traffic light either at either driveway. So we would be just, it would just be a driveway. And again, whether or not they would accept the left-hand turn out of there. I wish I had a more definitive answer for you, to be honest with you. It's, it's, it's a, it's a challenge and you know, a situation that we face many times.
David, if I can jump in here for a second.
Yeah, why don't you, Scott?
Yeah, the way the site's laid out for emergency access and for trucks exiting, we felt the right turnout was most appropriate. I'm not as concerned with passenger vehicles making a left-hand turn out of the site. But we're thinking about people who are renting a U-Haul truck or have a vehicle with a trailer on it and trying to exit onto Route Six across, you know, two lanes of traffic was not, in our minds, a, a great thing to do. Though we thought, at least for the one access driveway, to have them making a right-hand turn out. If someone is coming from the east and looking to depart toward the east, they could certainly park in one of the spaces out front, access their particular unit if they're going to pick up one or two items, and they could certainly exit out the, the, the main driveway and, and do that. If they're unloading, if it's, if it's something that they, they visit the site frequently, they would know that and, and do it. If they come to the site once or twice a year to unload lots of items or switch out their spring clothes for their winter clothes, as, as we've heard earlier, that'll just be something they'll have to plan to do and, and, and approach the site in one direction and exit the site in, in another direction. And, or they'll pick another self-storage facility where they can get to it and make the movements that they need to. But as you've heard, there's, you know, there's a need for this type of storage facility, and we think that these units are going to fill up and people will just have to plan appropriately and, and make the movements that they, they need to make. And, and plan accordingly. So.
Could I just add one other point? And I was reminded of it when Scott was talking. I mean, the intensity of use again is not going to generate a lot of traffic out of this site. So even if only a certain number of that small number decides that they want to take that aggressive U-turn, it's still very de minimis. So I just put that out there also. It's not a high generator of traffic.
A, a, a quick follow-up. So do you have any sort of data on the frequency of people who come and go? Or these storage facilities, right? Like if you, this owner owns a bunch in the country, do fifty people come and go on a Saturday, a hundred, ten? Because that, that would help us think about the traffic flow, right? If it's fifty cars coming and making that U-turn on a Saturday versus five.
Scott, why don't you take that question, because I know it's in your traffic study? Number of people coming into the facility on a daily basis.
Certainly, yeah. Running the, the IT numbers based on the size of the development and the, the number of potential units, we're looking at somewhere between ninety and a hundred and fifteen trips a day. And that's, a trip is a two-way item, so it'd be forty-five people a day to, to fifty-three people a day. And I expect that that's mostly during times when we're ramping up the facility. Peak hour volumes are in the range of six to thirteen trips in an hour. You know, with half of those entering and half of those exiting. So we're looking at low volumes of traffic on, on a regular and recurring basis. And again, as, as indicated, not all people would need to make a, you know, come from the eastern. Um, and again, as uh as indicated, not all people would need to make a, you know, come from the eastern and depart to the east. Um, if if we're looking at fifty percent coming and departing to the west, then you're looking at maybe twenty-five vehicles a day perhaps, which would have the um desire to make a U-turn, but then again, if if someone is um plans it accordingly, they could stop by the facility on their way home from work and they happen to be passing in one direction. So even though they live in one area, they may or work in one area, they can, they plan their trip accordingly and cuz they know that about the turn restrictions and and won't have to do it, so we're somewhere in the range of perhaps maybe twenty a day, which would maybe desire to make that particular movement.
So twenty a day might make that U-turn, U-turn I was describing?
Potentially.
Thank you, I'm good, Annette, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Patrick?
Uh, the only question I have was the uh the windows, is that strictly aesthetics? What's the uh, the purpose of the the windows? Is that to break up the building, is that?
Well, it does a couple of things for us, it does break up the building, but it um it it presents the building to the public as a self-storage facility, it's a show window, the doors behind it are are fake doors, they're faux doors, uh but it it presents people driving by that this is a self-storage facility.
Okay, I was just curious, that's my only question.
Okay. What do you, Scott?
Uh, no questions for me, thanks.
And Liz?
Uh, my one question is the term mountable curb, could you explain that? I'm just not familiar with that.
Um, you see the Malat, excuse, again, Dave Zaiex, you see them a lot on these uh restricted driveways. Basically, it would allow a an emergency vehicle like your fire truck or something to make that turn without having to make the sharp right-hand turn for them to leave. Um, uh, and if there's an emergency situation, you can, you could make a left-hand turn out by going over the top of that. I wouldn't recommend doing it with your normal car, but uh you can do that. I understand the concern, I mean, we 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 struggle with this, you you know them and on your Route fours, your Route sixes all through towns and there's always this constant give and take with, especially when the DOT is involved, you know, what's appropriate, right turn in, right turn out, they they tend to like these right turn in, right, right turn out onlys. And uh they have no sympathy for uh the comment that was brought up, or what about the people who need to go the other way? Well, they'll say, well, they'll just define a way to go the other way, it's it's one of those things that we just deal with, you know, thank you.
Okay, I just didn't quite understand what you meant, but it's, it's a curb to get you to turn the right direction, it's an island, okay. Okay, great, thank you, that's it.
That's all you have, okay, how about you, James?
No questions for me.
All right, and Matthew?
Uh, no questions for me.
Is there easy on that side, okay. Um, Shannon?
All the hard, all the hard ones down there, all good.
Got it, noted, noted, uh Shannon, have we received calls regarding this application?
Uh, calls, I'm not.
Not really?
No, not that we're aware of.
So um, what, let's see, I don't know who provided this document, I apologize, but there's a document that was shared on storage, self-storage comparisons. And I don't know if this is a good interpretation or not, but uh it seems to me that Farmington is not a hundred percent based on the information here. I don't know if I can take it further and say, well, maybe Farmington is satisfied with what we have. So who's gonna use this huge facility, probably people from surrounding towns, right? Um, I'm still worried about this uh con- location. Uh, I won't disclose how fast I was going today, uh but, and it's a two, you know, I was going back home off the highway and uh it was rough, um, and I can't even imagine if I needed to slow down and pull into this facility. Um, but maybe I'm a nervous driver, I don't know, um. So I, that's where I'm going with that, but uh the the what happens, so we have this uh business and hopefully it succeeds, let's say it gets approved, uh what happens if the environment changes, we don't have need for storage, I don't know, maybe there's an AI solution for all of our junk. But what happens if we have this building that has no septic really? It's like, who else could occupy this facility, like when we look at um our commercial?
If if you don't mind me answering that, I'd be glad to. Uh, so again, I've been in the business for twenty-nine years. Um, conversely, uh Kmart leaves and they have a big box uh or any other big box retail, they leave and they leave you with an ice war. Um, self-storage has been one of the best uses for those big boxes, um, U-Haul did that um within your geographic region. I don't know what it looks like, but I think they tried to do a pretty good job, but but you uh but self-storage typically goes into those big boxes. Uh, I can tell you in the twenty-nine years I've had experience, I've never ever seen one of these units like this type of facility uh ever be vacant. So even at seventy, eighty percent occupied, it still has more value than to letting it go. So I don't suspect you'll ever see this not become self-stored.
Yes, sure, I I get the spirit of what you're saying, but the royal pain to get to. The traffic is horrible, I cannot pull out of it. Okay, yes, only uh, you know, I'm only making several trips a year, I don't know, like remember my husband, he loves to check in on his storage unit. I just um, that that that's where my head is, we're a small town of twenty-five thousand people, we don't have big box stores. Uh, and uh based on the information, again, I don't know who pulled it together, we're not close to capacity with what we have.
So that was that?
Yes.
I'm assuming you're referring to the sheet that's.
Yes, 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 yeah.
So town staff pulled that together.
Okay.
Mr. Diggle did the research at uh at my request so that we had comparison information.
Okay. Um, I was also looking at uh the other storage units that have, you know, the five hundred, six hundred, uh, the large storage units. Uh, there, I think they're in different parts of towns and cities. Uh, like the one in Avon, all you see from the road are rooftops, uh I think that's the closest uh climate-controlled storage unit. Um. I don't know. I'm not convinced, I guess is where I'm going with this, I think it looks great and the applicant has done a great job uh making it go even better. But between the need, the location of it, that side of Route Six, I wish we could put it on opposite side of Route Six, I know it's a, I don't mean to be funny, but I think it it would belong better on the other side of the road. So I have no specific questions, I'm just going on and on, but I'll just kind of sharing my thoughts. Um, I think the information, I don't have additional questions regarding um what has been presented. Any, go ahead.
Yeah, um, so just listening to what you were saying, like when I think about this, um, I think we approved uh what, a thousand apartments, right, and every time we approve an apartment, I wonder like where, you know, where do they put their stuff? Like my own house, I feel like I can't, I can't stop building more storage, and I and I get rid of stuff too, so. Uh, my initial thought is that this is something that will be rented. Um, because of the apartments that are coming online, um, they they have stuff, right, and then they don't always wanna throw it away, or they might be moving to somewhere bigger or whatever, so the demand I would think is there, um, and that's just, just because of the thousand apartments that we have and and the popularity of that product, so those are.
No, that's, that's good, and well, I'm sure get into it more with that uh in the discussion, right, section, but thank you for sharing that, that's fair. Before we open it up, any more questions for the applicant?
Uh, just one, actually, it's a two-part question. Um, the average tenant, how far are they coming to get to this facility?
Okay, um, three minutes, three miles, that's what uh.
So your ring went out to five, I believe the inner ring was is two miles?
One, three, five, I think.
So the average would be somebody within that range.
Okay.
Average, so there would be others that would come, and remember, this is climate-controlled, so it's a specific type of unit.
Okay, so those rings there be the green ring?
Yes, that's right.
Okay. And uh on on tenancy rate, uh what's industry standard for a successful storage venture? Obviously, you one hundred percent, but what would be considered a successful storage unit?
Either Donald or I can answer that, but I mean, to be there weren't a successful business, you only need to be about seventy percent, seventy-two percent. Um, to obviously, the higher the number, the more successful you are, if you go back to that slide, um. I I I think there's, there's more proof of need than than there isn't on that slide, because when you look at these numbers, ninety-six percent, ninety-nine percent, ninety-one percent, there's only one that's eighty percent. Uh, the rest of them are over ninety percent full, that means that they have maybe ten units left uh at most, uh for a- all of those units are at ninety-six to ninety-seven or ninety-nine percent full. Um, so I think sort of opposite of what you're saying, that this chart really demonstrates the need for this area.
Correct, thank you, Mark, I was going to say the same thing, all the evidence points to the fact that these are very much in demand. And uh certainly the ones that the staff was able to get information on show that they're basically full. So there is demand, and I mean, to state the obvious, my client wouldn't be looking to make this sizable investment. Um, unless they thought this was going to be a very successful use. Uh, I'd like, unless there are other questions, I'd also like to address um your comment about accessing the site, remember, any use there, anything is still going to be faced with whatever constraints you felt right, left you uncomfortable on the roadway, it's still pardon me, David, do you wanna add to that?
Um, just in, uh Dave Zaiex, just uh in reference to the the chairwoman's uh comment is that I understand your concern, you know, if you go out there today, uh and you're driving along, you're like well, this is interesting, you know, how how is this gonna be a safe access point here, well? I I I felt the same way when when my clients first approached us for this, I said, uh that route part of Route Six, I don't know about that, let me go out and take a look at it, so. You know, I I've got it in my head how it's going to look when we're done, not with the way it looks now, so it is very intimidating to drive along there. And and look at, you know, all the heavy vegetation now and, you know, some of the rock outcropping kind of things around. But visualize what it's gonna look like and when we're done, we're gonna have two well-established driveways, everything's gonna be landscaped there, the building will be there. So that whole feeling of, you know, well, where's, how how are we getting in and out of this thing, how can we see anything? That's all going to be taken care of with the site work, so it's gonna have a whole different feeling to it when when you're done with it. One other interesting thing about it is when you're traveling sort of westbound on Route Six, heading towards Bristol. Uh, the the sightline is actually affected by the curve there as well with with the, because of the vegetation, everything, so. Uh, you're a bit surprised, the the sightline is going to improve for those folks too, as they're, as they're going around that big curve, they'll be able to see much better people coming from the other direction, so it's all gonna change a lot, so you you have to have a little I don't wanna call it a sense of imagination, but you have to like, you know, think about it in that regard, it's not what it looks like now, but what it's gonna look like when we're done with all the, you know, the site. Hmm, yeah, thank you.
I did have one more question that just came up. The uh artistic rendering um shows beautiful blue sky behind, but there's, we've got retaining wall and what will be, that, as we talk about ledge and rock and outcroppings, is, and the retaining walls in the back. From this point of view, will that be seen, I guess, will will there be a backdrop of of rock, how high up is that from the site, because we're looking directly down on it on all our, on all our maps. Looking this way, and I'm just curious to know what we'd look if we went
The site on average slopes towards the back.
Identify yourself.
Mark Dean and Dean Architects, and um, so really what you see from the rendering.
I need, I do need you up to the microphones, so so that we capture the uh recording, please, thank you.
So the site it slopes to the back, so the retaining wall that's in the back is gonna be fairly low-grade, you may not even see it, even if the building wasn't there, but the only thing you're gonna see, if we go back to the rendering, I mean, the rendering is true to the site plan. The way the curve is being shown, landscaping that's being shown, um. And you'll you'll see a little bit to the left, I don't think it's, unfortunately, it's not in the rendering. But you will see a little bit of the wall on the left, but as it wraps around to the back of the building, there's gonna be really no view of it at all uh from the road, so. Even though it is an artistic rendering and it and it is that, uh what you see is is really very close to what you're gonna get.
Okay, thank you.
I also have one last one, just.
This is why, this is why we have this, go ahead.
No, this uh this spreadsheet too, just talking about tenancy and things like that, um, in the the, there's four units um or four facilities in Farmington, three of which are exterior, ones interior. Would the exterior ones be non-climate controlled, is it typically, all right, so there would be only one of competition basically in town.
Right.
That's climate-controlled, that'd be a fair assessment?
Yes.
And for the record, if you heard that, Mr. Dean was saying, yes, that's the case.
Good, thanks.
Are we okay for now? We can come back, all right, so um hello again, uh this is a public hearing, if there's anyone in here that wishes to speak in favor or opposition of this application or has questions coming up, please? Please state your name and your address, thank you.
My name is John Galvin, I live at uh twelve Cutler Lane. I uh also am a commercial real estate appraiser and have the M I M I designation and have been praising for over thirty years and specialize in special-purpose property types, and my office is in my office condo, which I own at sixteen Spring Lane. But I also own the self-storage facility uh at six uh ten New Britain Avenue, Route Storage. And I also own eighteen Granger Lane, and I used to own, what is Trackside Storage now over in Plainville, and have appraised many of the self-storage facilities in this area over the years. So I am here in opposition to this, but I commend them for a beautiful design and hiring an excellent attorney. Um, but I, but I, as, um, that's why I started out, as a, as a resident, I just think it's too intensive a use. I never thought this was gonna get through uh wetlands, and I kinda feel like I'm standing on the railroad tracks and the train is about to hit me by coming up here and speaking. But uh it it's kinda like the Walmart coming into town and knocking us out is what it really is. Um, I just think it's too intensive a use for the site, I know we wanna have more commercial to reduce our taxes in town, et cetera, I do work for the town too in that respect. But I also think that safety-wise, it's just, it's an issue, if you've ever pulled out of Farmers Valley equipment or out of the, you know, I've done it with my dump truck, and it's like playing Frogger. Sometimes trying to get out there, and we've had have accidents out there over the years too, um, from the uh from uh the the competition part of it, I think if you go back to that chart, you'll see that both A-one and myself, we have the ability to expand, but we haven't expanded over the years because it's not feasible. We haven't been able to raise our rents that much, only in line with operating expenses, and the reason is, is because of the increased competition that's come on the market. Uh, I bought my facility in two thousand nine out of foreclosure, and it was twenty percent occupied when I bought it. They paid one point two million dollars to build it, I bought it for four hundred and twenty thousand. The town, when it was built, the planning and zoning made that the developer developer built it with um aesthetic split-face bulk block for construction, made them put a berm out in front and made them hide it because they didn't, they didn't want the facility at that time. The facility that I bought and sold over on uh Neal Court, I bought that out of foreclosure too in nineteen eighty-nine, it was ten percent occupied. Granger Lane I also bought was distressed from the property owner. My point is, these are not recession-proof, as much as the people come out and all the statistics and everything that's going on, they are not recession-proof, as a matter of fact, I've been appraising now for over thirty years, but I started out at a bank, and at one time, self-storage was considered an undesirable loan at the bank. And the reason is because they do get beat up, now this particular facility does have a climate control. A-one has climate control, he's never been able to rent out his climate control at any more than his regular units, and his climate control is mostly been vacant. I don't know about the facility on that um on New Britain Avenue, the new one that was approved on the corner of New Britain Avenue and before, I knew, I do know Jim Calciano, and I do know that when he got it approved. Uh, the the primary approval was the bank and the, and they also, when they approved that, they didn't think they were gonna be able to lease it up. I know they're still struggling the last time, and they have put laterals, sewer and water laterals in, when they developed that, thinking that they're gonna have to go back to retail at some point. So that question I thought was very good, because that building has an alternative use, it can be due or uh for thing, uh for something else if something goes on. or, uh, for thing, uh, for something else if something goes on. But I think you got to understand that the self-storage business is built in layers as it's been indicated. You know, you have your hoarders, you have your contractors, you have your people moving in and out, as it was said, that buy houses and come and go. And you have these different layers. And, uh, and you have guys that use it for man caves, you have your people from your apartments that keep their, you know, patio furniture in it and stuff like that. You, and that is, that is a big part of it. But the market for a self-storage facility, which I disagree with, with what the regional statistics show, because it's very common for the REITs to do that, is pretty much your zip code and your fringe of your surrounding zip code. And if you look at our occupancy rate and everybody's occupancy rate, that's pretty much what it is. We don't get anybody from West Hartford. Avon self-storage was sold to a REIT, which was built up and man did a great job running that. I've appraised it a couple of times. His primary customers were not just coming from Avon, they were coming from West Hartford, which was an underutilized market. It was an underdeveloped market. And they've been expanding over in that market to capture that. We don't really have anybody to come down from Avon, our facilities. We have a couple that come in from Burlington. No one really further. We have a couple that come in from Bristol because they feel like it's a little safer than what's over there. But we really don't have anybody coming from New Britain anymore or from, um, or West Hartford anymore or anything like that. And, and the primary reason is if you look at the market, um, in the past, you know, seven, ten years, we've had six hundred units go over in Bristol. Suddington expanded with six hundred units. In New Britain, we had, we had Connecticut self-storage expand in Plainville. We had U-Haul put up by the G E building, which is, I think they were approved for twelve hundred units. They still have a lot more that they can put up. That's inside, not just the outside units. The Walmart and the, uh, Shaw's building in, in New Britain both had been converted to inside self-storage. And now the Shaw's building is up for sale because they're struggling to get that occupied. We're just oversaturated. We've had new, uh, out in, uh, New Hartford that's been built up. And then another facility further out in New Hartford in the old Waring Building. That's been struggling to lease up. So we just, it's, we're not a market that actually has a demand for this. And those statistics are up there, the ninety-seven, I'll argue with those all day long. One of the tricks in the trade is when you call us and ask us if we have any units available, we all say, yeah, we have a few units. Cause if we tell you how many units you're going to have, we're going to have somebody say, well, I'll, I'll give you a lower fee and then it just starts driving down the, the ra- rates. And, um, it, it's, it's, so it's a trick in the trade that everybody tells you they don't have as much available as they really do. Um, and if you don't believe me, you can go talk to Dave Gardner or your assessor and look at our I N E statements, which are based on our tax return, you can figure out what our occupancy rate, true occupancy rate has been. As far as the traffic coming in and out of the facility, we only have a hundred and twenty units over here in Farmington and we're probably around forty, fifty, sixty cars a day coming and going. Um, it, it is a, we get more people in the morning and a lot of people at night and on the weekends it can get quite hectic over there. Um, but we also rent to the different sports leagues in town and stuff like that in order to keep our place occupied. We do, we do reduce the rents for some of the people too. I probably on tape, I shouldn't be saying that, but but I'd be happy to answer any questions. But the primary thing is, I, I just think this is an over-improvement for the site. I mean, I can totally understand um, them wanting to be there. I can totally understand the logistics of coming in from out of the state or Houston, someone from California and looking at this market and saying it makes sense demographically. But you got to remember that people always forget. I mean, you look at the Berlin Turnpike, the Berlin Turnpike, we have national retailers constantly going in and out of there because they come in and they look at the regional statisti- statistics and they think it makes sense. But they forget that people don't go over the mountain to go to places. I mean, how many of you have actually traveled to Bristol to go shopping? We, we tend to go north. I mean, it's just how we, we are around here. Um, so I, I think this is just, uh, an over-improvement for the site. I am opposed of it. And if I didn't get up here and say something and it does get built, I'm probably going to be kicking myself in the tail because they're going to have to cannibalize from us. And one of the problems we have with the regionals, I did a, I did a a three-hour lecture for the Connecticut Assessors Association on the self-storage industry. And, uh, and one of the things that happens in the industry is you have your REITs, you have your regionals, and then you have your mom and pops. And one of the problems is when they come in the market, they offer deals, they offer all these incentives and they basically cannibalize from other people. And that's what's, what happens. And then we end up on an oversaturated market. And what happens if our occupancy drops any further? What happens then to the community? We got to come in and we got to file a tax appeal because we can't afford to pay the taxes and set price. So it kind of dwindles down. So you may be gaining one way, but you're going to lose elsewhere. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you might have.
Thank you for coming in. We appreciate it. Right? Yeah. Thank you. Anyone else that wishes to speak that's in the room regarding this application? We're good. Okay. How about online, Shannon? Do we have anyone?
Okay, if anyone has called in online, uh, to offer comment on the Bulwark self-storage application, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom and you will be acknowledged to address the commission. Again, if anyone's called in to offer comment on the Bulwark self-storage application on Route Six, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom and you'll be acknowledged to address the commission. Madam Chair, there are no hands raised.
Okay. Alright, Commissioners, any final questions for the applicant? Are we comfortable closing the hearing?
Yes.
Okay, so. Yeah, I know.
It would have been, I, I wish we'd had your concerns, you know, that we could have given a little more thought to before trying to address them before you. As a land use attorney, I have to point out the obvious, which may not win any points for us. Uh, but competition is not a consideration. It never has been and it's certainly not something that you look at in terms of, um, the standards of review. That's a harsh thing to say. It's not necessarily a good thing to say in terms of trying to bring an application home, but all of the evidence that we have got and which our client is basing this application on indicates there is a real need and that this is going to be a very nice facility. Might it impact some other businesses? In terms of, uh, people wanting to be there in a climate-controlled facility and a new one, a new facility? Yes, that's certainly a possibility. But it, there is all the research that we have done and I believe what you can see looking at the chart. Um, we accept those numbers and the experience we have because we know some operators in the area and we've talked to them one-on-one who would not be in this same exact area. Um, you know, they have, they've said, for instance, that West Hartford project, it's going gangbusters right now. Um, there are, there is a need, the evidence supports that. And it doesn't indicate that it would be robbing from one person for another to be able to go forward. Now, this is an argument you, I know you hear, um, in other types of businesses. Do we need a new, another restaurant? It's only going to cannibalize other restaurants. Do we need another grocery store? It's only going to affect, um, other businesses that we have in town. So it's, it's a fact of life that, um, if there's a market need, people will want to develop and provide a product that's going to be desirable. And, um, we've made an application that establishes there is a need. And we've met all of the requirements. Your P O C D suggests that this is a logical site for something like this. And, you know, we hope it won't be negative on this gentleman's business. We don't think it will be. And we think the need will continue to grow as people get more and more used to putting their, their goods in self-storage. So we hope that considering all that, that you'll still be able to approve this application. Thank you. And I'd like to look at the team and see if there's anything else anybody else wants to say. But, uh, it doesn't look like it, so.
Good, thank you. Okay, so at this point, we're closing the hearing, thank you. Shannon? Thinking about that, so we have a zone change, right? And the site plan? So two?
Special permit and site plan.
Like when we vote to just
Two motions.
Right. Or you think one appropriate? Or just do it together?
Uh, it can be done. It, it, it can be done as one. It can be done as one. They will have differing effective dates. And there's a landscape buffer waiver required. It does not, it does not require five, six vote. It's just a waiver that's required. I have to go back through. Because of the side yard landscape buffer, um, adjacent to a residential area. So it's ta- it's talked about in the agenda review.
Yep. Okay, so we, uh, need a motion and a second before discussion, please.
Okay.
You're taking it on, alright.
I guess the whole entire meeting.
I missed you, Patrick, by the way.
He's laughing.
Yeah, I know. Uh, okay, um, I'd like to make a motion to approve the, um, Bulwark LLC's application for a change of zone from R eighty to C one and approve a special permit and site plan approval for construction of a self-storage facility located on lots eight, one, two, zero and eight, one, two, two Colt Highway across from two forty-two Colt Highway.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Alright, discussion. In favor or opposition? Go ahead.
Is that alright? Fire away.
So I, I think this site, I think the applicant's attorney said it last time. It's, I think for me, it's either sort of dormant or it's the C one, right? And what type of, um, sort of business or, or C one type of uh, use do we want for this site? Again, it's sort of a tricky part, so part of Route Six. Based on testimony tonight, there seems to be a little bit more cars than I expected. So the site plan and just driving up and down and that, thinking about people making that U-turn back up, back up the hill makes me concerned. Um, so, so that's my sort of thought process. But again, for a use, there's a lot, uh, interior, a ton of people coming and going. It's not, you know, it's like a Walmart or a big commercial where a lot of people, they need a, a traffic sign, so that, that's kind of my initial thoughts here.
Patrick.
I mean, I agree with what, with what he's saying. I don't, I don't know how many people would do a U-turn on Route Six. That's, that's insane. I guess they business, I think, probably, right?
That's, that's sort of my, my point is we're taking traffic, you know, we're taking motor vehicles or off the site. Um, but how much does that up to us to say, well, we're making people do right turn only? And then how much do we say, well, fifty percent of the people are going to make a U-turn or use another business to turn around and how, how much is that a consideration or not to, you know, approve or deny this application? That's, that's the biggest one for me.
Is the safety?
Yeah, is the safety. I think the use of a storage facility and the height kind of meets the requirements. And again, this area of town, I, I think it makes sense to me. It's my perspective, sorry to cut you off, Patrick.
Yeah, no, I agree. I agree with that. Um, I guess it's unfortunate they are going to go use the other businesses, right? Cause that's the easiest way. Um, you know, I don't, I, I maybe you'll have a few that are just going to break the rules and jump the multiple curb. Um, but I'm assuming it's aggressive enough without seeing it. Um, it's probably most likely aggressive enough to really get them to go that way. Yeah, I mean, the, the fact that the D O T, you know, like they mentioned, I mean, it's something that we could ask, right? Not make it a condition because then but maybe we do that where, where we say if you can, the D O T allows you to. Um, if the D O T doesn't, obviously they have their reasons on, on why they don't. It's safer to take the chance of the U-turn or whatever it is. In terms of the, the use of it, again, I don't know, you know, I was responding. My gut is that it seems like, first of all, who would want to make that type of investment, right? For it just to fail, um? So it, and it seems like with, with all the apartments that are, that I've witnessed and voted on just in maybe some in that three mile radius, you know, um? It seems like it's, the demand would be up, but again, I don't know. I've never checked it. Um, but that's it. I mean, I, I, I agree with everything that Matt said.
How about you, Scott?
So. I'm not really factoring the business need in at all, for the same reason, the example of the restaurant, like, I'm not sure that's in our place to really determine what the economics of it are. But to be honest, I don't see this fitting in our town and I don't see it fitting in that space. And I know we're making comparisons. There's commercial across the street. To me, they're much less obtrusive than this is. And you've got large buildings down the street, but they all face the other way as well. So you're not, the exposure to Route Six is not the same. I'm really having a hard time getting past this being part of what people see when they come into Farmington.
Okay. Good.
I'm good.
Liz?
Uh, well, I, I feel that this is the, an appropriate location for this because of the commercial across the street and it is Route Six. Uh, I'd love to see it maybe be two stories and I think that would be a little easier and more, more palatable. I, it is a large structure. I do like what the revisions that have come out. I think that is much more responsive to or much more amenable to our, um, to Farmington. Personal experience with, uh, with the storage, um, lived in Bloomfield and we had a place in Avon, but my husband worked across the street. So it was very easy. Um, but there is, uh, and we were the once a year, twice a year users, not the frequent, not the Saturday afternoon, visit my stuff type people. So uh, I, I, I tend to agree with Patrick that, yeah, it just seems like there's there is a need. Again, I don't know. I haven't researched it. So good location, not sold on how big it is.
Okay. James?
Um, yeah, a couple, a couple of things. Um, firstly, I just wanted to, um, thank the applicant for addressing some of the concerns that I had the last meeting um, with regards to aesthetics, um, you know, putting the brick, the facade, um, changing it up a little bit. It's less of an eyesore than it was originally. Um, so it looks a lot better and I understand the, the, the color component of it being a brand element more so than anything else. But I, you know, I, I agree with my fellow commissioners about the size. Um, is a little bit tough. Um, but, um, the zone change is a no-brainer. I feel like, you know, it's right, right in line with the P O C D. Um, and you know, I, I feel like for this particular parcel, low traffic is exactly what we would need for this parcel and for it to, to work. Um, so this is like a perfect type of business. Um, with Scott on the fact that like the business need and, you know, whatever, those compares, that's not in our purview and that's, that's the, for the, the business owner to, uh, to worry about. Um, but I, I've, yeah, I'm, I'm a little on the fence with regards to the size. Um, but at the same time, I think it's a it's a good thing to put something there. You know, Matt, your earlier comment about having it being vacant or dormant or having something there is, and you know, I, I know that who knows what else could potentially go here if someone wanted to do the same thing, come in, do another zone change. Um, and what type of business would be an alternative to this? You know, I think I don't, I don't know what we'd get. Um, that's probably, that's better suited for the parcel. So that's kind of where my head's at.
Thank you. Matthew, unfortunately you don't get to participate. You're, you're good, okay. Um, so thank you. So thank you for, um, all the commissioners, uh, for the great questions. Obviously yours, spending time reviewing all the documentation, which has been fabulous by this applicant. I don't think it fits our town. Uh, I don't see people coming from West Hartford um, or Avon or other nearby communities to this location because they have their own storage facilities. I also think it's just very, very large. And, um, that I, I understand that we're in a commercial part of Route Six, but that corner, I don't think it's a great idea to develop that corner. Uh, and that's obviously my opinion only, um, but I definitely will not be supporting this application. Alright. We have questions for Shannon, go ahead. We have questions, push it, go ahead.
Someone second.
It's someone second emotion from, yeah, James, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes, this is James.
Yes.
When I'm in, I'm in.
Yeah, yeah.
You're in.
We know.
Any questions for Shannon, we're good, everybody, good.
Yes. Discussion, right?
Yes, it is.
The si- the size of the building that because it gives you think of this as a little bit of a gateway into the Farmington Valley, right? And thinking the entrance, it, if if it is, right, like come coming down the hill, comes down through six, and there's a big storage facility on your right-hand side as you enter. Yeah, I'm not sure we can reduce that at this point to approve it, right, so again, I agree, I mean, it's a, it's a, it's large, but in this area, there's not, you know, there's not, nothing really around it, except.
For storage or?
I don't think the area is very pretty anyways. Right? Like, it's not
That.
You don't like the mafia blocks?
I I guess I, I don't, I don't know, I I just don't know how much, how much it's gonna, how much it's gonna change the complexion of the area, you know what I mean?
Does it need to? So. You're okay? What about the data? All right. So where are we going with this, are we ready to vote, or you were thinking of adding a condition, Matt?
Uh, uh, just based on commentary, if anyone is thinking that, I mean, I don't think we can add a condition to shrink the size of the building, right, so. It it the site plan, I would love to add a s- a condition on the site plan because of my sort of U-turn or turn into another business, I I just don't, I can't see one that actually works because we're trying to change behavior off-site. Right, so just keeping it the left onsite, is that, if that's more dangerous, so uh, again, that that was the only, that was the only one for me, but again, I just don't think there is one.
People are, people are gonna do what they're gonna do.
Right, you 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 should control them right there, that's all they can do.
Example, you know, um, Treehouse up in Massachusetts, how they had the, oh, when they first built it.
Brewery?
Yes. How they had, though they had, but they had a right, they had a right turn only, and then there was the car dealerships up there, and then all the car dealerships had signs that said no U-turn all up the, all up that road.
Yeah.
And then Treehouse finally got it approved to take the left-hand turn, so I think it's gonna end up being a situation where it'll, it'll go a right turn only. And if the businesses get pissed, then they can just come back and ask for a revision or something.
What is the nearest business anyways, isn't it pretty far of the road, like?
Yeah. You gotta go up.
The way down. Yeah, not C V S, not that far, but no, well.
No, it is, the only other option is to go on reservoir, take a right onto reservoir or.
I'm gonna interject on this just for clarity, just so, so this is the parcel. The stream crossing is roughly midway through the parcel, so this, this is the developed area, so if you make a right turn out the driveways immediately.
But I did this one.
Thank you.
It's gonna be the first one.
On track.
Okay.
So.
I felt you need to understand the orientation.
Yeah, thank you, that's good.
And those two businesses could in theory be affected by people take, I mean, again, people take it right and have to go right, right, so, but again, I don't know, it's it's enough for me to vote now on.
If you're not familiar with the area, right, because we're attracting people from all over.
Correct.
Right? Uh, you're gonna hopefully follow signage, you you prob- I can't imagine someone I guess if you're completely disobeying the right turn only, right? I mean, you maybe would do it enough hours, you know what I mean? But that road. I don't know. I think we should leave that right turn only.
Yeah. I I I think I I agree, I don't think making a left makes any sense, I don't think that'll get approved.
But just.
Yeah.
I think you control what you can control, which is on that property, and if you make it a right turn only lane, then that's their option, so, and right.
One of them is gonna be left turn, right, so one of the.
Well, yes, but.
Are we comfortable vote, do we know what we're voting on?
Yes.
We're comfortable.
Everybody's. We're vote, we're voting on the zone change.
Yeah.
And then the.
Special permit and site plan. All together, we'll go.
Okay.
So we need a, we'll do one by one?
Uh, certainly.
All right, thank you. Should we start on that side?
Okay, I could make a break.
And I'll go, I'm I'm a yes.
I'm a yes.
No.
No. Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Can I ask a question, Jim?
Yes. I have the if the uh commission's agreeable, then the dates, as noted in the in in the agenda review, will hold with a recommended date of the zone changes sixteen days after the date of publication, and then the recommended effective date of the special permit and site plan would be seventeen days after the date of publication.
Thank you, we should probably start reading that again, huh? We were reading it into the motions and then we stopped, sorry.
But is it?
Make sure it's in the decision. The effective date of the zone change. Have you a special time?
Yeah, no, she's telling you.
Now. I'll make sure it's in your decision letter.
We.
Yeah.
We, did we pass the rule, we don't have to necessarily?
Well, we did, so also, uh, Robin, we've subsequently made a um uh, change to the zoning regulation that if it's neglected to be discussed specifically, then it's
Fifteen days.
I don't care where it's fifteen or sixteen days after the date of the approval.
Fifteen.
That's me. So the, there is his own uh regulation change. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, planner's report.
Yes, I've got a few. I actually have a handful of items to chat with you briefly on.
Sounds good.
Okay, so the first is um I've got Mott Corporation, you'll recall.
Shut up. They're expanding, right?
They're expanding over at uh
New Britain Avenue.
On New Britain Avenue, they're taking in a portion of the sixteen ninety.
Yep.
Uh, building, so as part of their uh, working through construction items and working with Eversource, uh, there's a handful of changes. So I've already gone ahead and approved since everything in this particular case was a minimization of what had been approved, but this is just an update for the commission. Uh, the generator size, the size of the generator pad was reduced from twenty-two by fifty to thirteen by twenty-nine, and this is the the generator pad uh located at the uh the edge of the parking area. The uh chiller units from, went from four to two, the chiller units were right immediately adjacent to the building. Uh, the revised proposed transformers at the northeast corner of the building went, uh, I think for three is what they had shown originally, so we are now at uh, one that's uh for current use, one for future use. And then uh one was eliminated, so we've gone from three to two. Uh, there's a concrete pad added for a gas meter here, just at the very edge of the northeast corner of the building, again, it's a two by three. Uh, and a light pole was moved, um, I believe, uh, from this vicinity over uh just closer to the driveway, so rather than it being kind of hanging in the middle of nowhere, it was moved moved closer to the driveway and the upper parking lot uh near the new walk. So those were um changes, the the generator, chiller, and transformer all were um requests from Eversource as part of their power supply request to Eversource. So if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them. All good, okay.
Is that project delayed though, or by because of this or no?
Uh, the projects would delay, I think part of the delay has been coordinating with Eversource for power for this area, um, we've been made aware that there's been um, a few challenges with that, uh. Mott Corporation isn't the only one experiencing this, uh, due to the large power demand of the facility, the refrigeration facility in Plainville. Um, it's now made a challenge for Eversource to supply uh some of the additional demand for the industrial customers. So that's being worked through, um, so, but yes, that's uh some of the challenge.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Yep.
Uh, I've got three three other things, I'm gonna start with the quickest one, um, Crog.
Yes.
Survey. Uh, Garrett had sent an email, you were all included in an email on June second that Garrett sent out. Um, serve, uh, Crog is doing their regional uh P O C D, right, so we're part of Crog, they're doing their regional P O C D. As part of that, they are doing, they've sent out a survey and asked us to distribute it far and wide, so all the land use commissions received it directly. It will go in the summer newsletter, the survey is open until, I believe, the end of July. So um I will probably resend it, so it pops up for you, but if you do a search in your email for Garrett, um, it shouldn't come up. Please, if you have the time, I think it's just a a handful of minutes, um. But it would be helpful to try to get some feedback, um. It's one thing for them to get feedback from staff. It's a whole nother different, you know, you as commissioners have a, you know, a slightly different lens, and then even the um, you know, residents as a whole. If you're part of an H O A or a neighborhood group email, group text message, uh, feel free to send it, like I said, it will get out uh to the populace through our summer newsletter, we're also working on getting it out on uh Explore Farmington and on the webpage.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, um, next item. Our zoning, uh, we're working on a zoning text amendment for our industrial zones for the uh commercial restricted and the commercial uh C one zone. Uh, looking at altering our impervious cover uh requirement, so we're at the forty percent impervious coverage, and then we've got uh fifty percent with a five, six vote. It's pretty standard across pretty much all the playing fields and and Farmington are um here's some of our morph uh medical office and special innovation zone has slightly higher impervious coverage. As we look at this, there's no more there's not a lot of additional developable land in Farmington, and certainly not for some of our industrial partners or 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 uh businesses in town. So what we're looking at doing, um, for me, looking at it, the impervious coverage, the the largest driving force with reducing impervious coverage, not just from the uh, obviously, the aesthetics of it is one element. Um, but the stormwater runoff and stormwater management, so not only the volume of runoff, but the quantity of um the quality of that runoff and having uh an ability to infiltrate uh water back into the groundwater uh table. So we're looking at uh doing a modification to the regulation that will allow uh a higher impervious coverage with a requirement of a higher uh stormwater infiltration, stormwater um quality requirements uh even above what our MS four, like probably doubling with the MS four water quality um uh infiltration requirements are. Um, interestingly, many of our industrial zones are within uh two aquifers, to the south where we have uh Spring Lane, High Johnson, Johnson, there's the F I P aquifer, and it actually, it runs along our southern border. And and the balance of it is in Plainville, um, that aquifer. And then the other area along the Brick Rock, Brickyard Road area um is our sand and stone aquifer, and that comes down uh into Farmington Avenue as well. Um, and right into where the midpoint development is. So this is i- i- the request for staff, th- this is something, uh, if I'm completely honest, I had already kind of kicked around in my head, because Rose and I talk about oh, we're limited with the forty, the forty and fifty percent coverage, what are we, you know? What are our options, how do we get around this, and this is something that I'd been thinking about. Way in the back reaches, things percolate in Shannon's head for a while, and they just kind of ruminate there. Um, it has been brought to the forefront because there is a developer that's interested in in doing something else, um, it it actually ultimately may impact this property that's up on the the screen, but nonetheless um, we're going to look at, for us, from a town standpoint, I felt it, um, since it would be a whole scale, looking at the industrial properties, that this would be a town-sponsored text amendment to take a look at. Working to have the application put forth at the next meeting to be accepted. And then the hearing open. We'll see whether we open it in the first meeting in July, we might run it for two hearings, so that there's plenty of time to talk and ask questions and kick things around.
So this is a heads up?
This is a heads up, yep, so it's not coming more out of the blue than this conversation already is. Um, but if there's questions or things that you're thinking of, um, or it sparks something um, obviously, feel free, it's a town, it'll be, it's, like I said, a town, um, proposed amendment, so it's kind of pregame, if we don't like something, we change it, you don't agree with me, that's fine. Perfectly fine, so uh it's what, um, you know, what we we think is best, um, so there's a variety of metrics, so. So that was um that was the second thing. Uh, the third thing is a moratorium. The moratorium as it stands is set to expire on July twentieth, I think, is the date we have, um. I have gone back and I've uh talked with Bob Di Crescenzo to find out exactly if if the commission uh desires to do so, how best to extend and if it required reopening the public hearing uh or having a new public, you know, reopening, but have noticing and doing a whole new public hearing. Um, so in reviewing it with Bob, he said no, because of how it was, we originally proposed the one-year moratorium, and then we broke it into six and six. So that option to extend is pretty much at your purview, what I would do is put it on as a new business item. So that would have to be no later than that first meeting in July as a new business item to vote to extend the moratorium, because the first meeting in July is seventeenth, so we go July seventeenth and July thirty-first, we got pushed because of the July fourth holiday. So if there's a general sense, and we can chat about it a little bit now, we do, we do have um a few work session items to talk about, and there is a gentleman on the phone to talk about the
Okay.
A D U um uh item, but if there's a a quick one or two comments regarding or thoughts on it, or we can come back to that, we can talk about A D U and then come back to
Yeah.
discussing moratorium extensions if you want, and then um.
I think we should let the gentleman speak, yeah.
Okay, so.
Sorry.
All right, um. Okay, so. Got to drive. Okay, John, can you hear me?
Uh, I can, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
So. John, if you would, just for the, so just so you know where we, I did share with uh the commission your thoughts on uh A D U, so that uh that draft memo you had sent to me. Um, if you could, just do a brief introduction of yourself, so the commission understands I, the point of view you're coming from, um, and then ask your thoughts um on the A D U, that would be helpful. So you've got the form.
Okay, thank you, uh, my name is John Galvin, and um I'm not surprised that we ran so late, but I'm I'm actually shocked that there's two John Galvins there tonight, uh, that was the gentleman opposing the storage unit was also named John Galvin. Really confused me there for a while, um. Yeah, my name is John Galvin, I'm joined, I think they're still online, uh, by my sister, Noreen Galvin and Michelle Willis, uh, they're the owners of one sixty-two Wood Pond Road in Farmington. We were interested, uh, bought the property a year and a half so ago, needed major renovations, it's still Sikorsky property. And it it's on a large parcel on the lake, it has a uh three-bedroom, uh, I'm sorry, three-car garage with a space above that's already finished. Um, I think it was used as an art studio and or a uh yoga studio, so it is a finished unit, does not have plumbing. Thought it would be uh wonderful for uh an A D.
We're losing you, John.
Yep.
Lost you.
Lost you.
So the garage is detached, right?
In general, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, you're in and out a little bit, John. Unfortunately, your connection seems, um, compromised a bit.
Okay. Are you, uh, am I still in and out now?
No, you're a little better right now.
Okay. Uh, let's hope it stays. So, uh, I don't know how much of that you caught, but interested in putting a, uh, an ADU in an already finished space above a three car garage. Uh, everything is, to my understanding, if not, I think it's originally permitted, certainly grandfathered. Um, so, uh, I've done a quite a bit of renovations in Connecticut down in, uh, Fairfield um, before moving out to California, which is where I am now. So, uh, it's, it's only dinner time here. I thank you guys for hanging in. Um, uh, California did pass an ADU, uh, law and, uh, so that was a, a big deal in California for the last two years. And, uh, when I came out here, I slowed things down and I've only done historic home renovations. I've done two, um, one had a detached ADU from an existing, really was a barn, uh, horse barn, and the other was a junior ADU. Um, so I have some familiarity with ADUs from building them and the code and, and just in general researching ADUs, um, policies across the country in the different states. Uh, so I was heartened to see that the Affordable Housing Plan included recommendations uh, that the commission and the, um, town council approved. That's not, they're only recommendations, but I would imagine in, uh, litigating that, that, uh, at least the framework for an ADU policy, those three points to allow, um, unrelated people to rent and have detached ADUs that those are really the heart of just about every ADU policy. Um, where they tend to differ is in, uh, whether there's going to be any zoning variances of, uh, a particular single family residence. Does it have to adhere to lot coverages setbacks, et cetera? There are some differences there, although there's a lot more commonalities. Uh, parking is another issue and so forth. Um, I know that in just researching ADUs, you'll hear one thing that's said all the time and that they're low hanging fruit and, uh, and that's why they're in most people's, uh, housing plans or strategies. Um, a- and they say that because it's, uh, it, most of these slip pretty easily into existing, uh, zoning regulations, uh, so that they begin, um, they, they don't need special, uh, permits, et cetera. Um, they're pretty much as, if they're built right, they're pretty invisible. Um, they tend to be at the back of, uh, existing houses. Uh, and they can be scaled. So typically they, they're about thirty percent of, uh, the size of the existing house and so forth. But so that's the good side and there's all sorts of reasons, um, on, on who they serve, uh, predominantly it's almost a senior citizen issue. I mean, the people who build these, about sixty to seventy percent build it either for a senior or it's built by a senior. Um, so lots of good things to be said about ADUs. Uh, probably the downside is that people, uh, uh, or town planners and commissions such as yourself are overly optimistic on how many units actually get built. And so this is strictly anecdotal from my own experience and my conversations with a few pla- town planners I've worked with. Um, the town that I built in, uh, is about half the size of Farmington. Um, built about four ADUs in the first year they were approved. They were all, uh, six hundred square feet or less. Uh, studios are one bedrooms occupied by one person. Um, and I think all of them, at least the two that I built were for seniors. Uh, the town Fairfield would have a lot of experience with the town plan. I call them and, um, what they did was what might've been a better way to go, uh, in, during the opt-out phase was to do an opt-out and, um, design your own regulations at the same time. And that's what Fairfield did. So Fairfield's been up and running with ADUs, I think for at least a year, maybe eighteen months. And I think they have eight permits issued for the entire town. I don't know how many of those got built, certainly not all eight. Um, and Fairfield's got sixty thousand people. And then there's, there's a host of other, um, you know, towns that have them and I haven't done the research, but I would think that in approaching whether you're going to approve ADUs and how quickly to approve ADUs, et cetera, that the sort of guiding principle needs to be that, well, we want to encourage people or make it, make the regulations flexible enough so that people who need this can, can build them. But at the same time, restrict to the extent that you don't have bad, bad outcomes. Um, so that's, that's kind of the guiding principle here. And I think that a lot of the, uh, pushback against ADUs is that it's going to overburden the sewer system, the school system, public services, parking, et cetera. And quite frankly, uh, um, they tend, I wouldn't say they're a nothing burger, but, uh, not a lot of these actually wind up getting built. Now, having said that, with the housing issue that everybody's facing, particularly with, uh, housing for singles, not being able to do everything is, uh, no reason to do nothing. And if you build three or four of these a year, at the end of your five-year plan, you have something akin to a small apartment building with none of the disruption. And it also, it addresses a completely different population that might live in an apartment building. So mom is mom and dad or, uh, they don't need the big house anymore. They don't want to leave their property. They don't want to move into an apartment in town. They build a cute little cottage in the back, often looks better than the house, quite frankly. And the house then can be given over to their children who are struggling with that price of housing. Um, in, that actually is more common than couples building the cottage for mom to move into. That, that was one surprise for me, but, um, and there's, there's a host of other, obviously some people will rent to make some more money. Uh, again, seniors who, uh, the house taxes are making the housing somewhat unaffordable, can stay in the house if the rent is, um, uh, if, if their mortgages sub or taxes are subsidized by rental. So, uh, you know, again, uh, given the hour, I, I don't think we have time to go through the proposal. What I was hoping to do tonight was to get the whole issue of ADUs back on the radar. I know last year when we opted out and Matt, I think it was you, uh, said, uh, deadlines have a way of spurring action, you know, and, um, you know, the opt-in had a deadline. So, I mean, they opt out. So, uh, the town opted out, but there was no deadline put on when the issue might be picked up again. So I was hoping they'd just get it back in front of the commission and see whether through, uh, a type of meeting like this or a, a separate working group. Um, the commission could decide whether they want to move forward at all or in what manner they might want to move forward on, uh, AD, on relaxing AD regulations. Um, so that's, uh, and of course I'll, I'll, I'll answer any questions about the document that I, uh, had sent to Shannon. But, uh, again, thanks for hanging in there. I know it's, I guess it's ten o'clock your time, but, uh, I appreciate, uh, your, uh, taking the time.
Thank you, Mr. Galvin. And, uh, we've been actually meeting way past this. So this is early. Um, so, uh, we'll definitely, um, uh, go to all the, obviously to every commissioner. I can't even speak. There you go. But so, uh, Mr. Galvin, what, what is your background? Like you're a builder or?
Um, hmm, uh, I, I spent a lot of years in, uh, uh, banking, in training and development. Uh, and, uh, sort of a hobby, probably what I should have done from the beginning was to build. And I started out by building a, uh, two-family house for my wife's parents and my parents. Uh, you can hear from my accent. I grew up in the Bronx. So, um, you know, uh, you think it's funny back there, out here, they're just, whatever, I need a translator. Um, but, um, you know, we were first time home buyers and my parents and my, uh, wife's parents were, you know, uh, stuck in the Bronx and really couldn't afford the, you know, property. And I built a duplex for them to live in. And, uh, I, I loved it and I kept on doing it. So I always did it through my banking career. And then right after nine eleven, I was downtown for nine eleven. I said, you know, I don't know if it had that impact, but coincidentally I left banking and I started doing, um, construction, uh, sometime for family members, but basically on spec, I would just basically show me the worst falling down house in town and I'm the guy that you want to buy it. And that's, that's what happened out here in California, two historic properties that were, um, deemed teardowns. Um, I thought they could be saved and, and I did. And, um, I actually won, uh, the Historical Society Award for both of them. So, um, that's sort of my background. I'm not a, you know, people ask me, am I a builder? I say I'm not an expert, but I know a lot. And in building, I've learned a lot about, um, building codes. And although every town is different, there's a lot that's very common in terms of how towns, um, manage the, uh, their land use and their concerns. Uh, so when you read about ADUs and you read about comments from town planners and public comment, uh, in different states, whether it's California where everybody thinks were weird to Connecticut and towns in between, uh, the same issues are raised over and over again. And the one that I found, I, I wouldn't call it amusing, but is that, um, the near hysteria sometimes that you hear about how many ADUs are going to be built. And then you see, so for example, in Fairfield, uh, there's an eight to one by the town commission to approve it. Um, nobody made an application. So they actually started marketing, uh, ADUs to the public. And like I said, I think they only have about eight permits. I don't know of any, a lot of people will pull permits for these and then not build them when they see what the costs are. They're not cheap to build.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Galvin. I was just, uh, you know, you're clearly passionate about this topic. Uh, thank you for coming in front of us and I'll turn it over to the other commissioners. Um, I wasn't sure why Farmington, but I guess it's the connection to your sister. Are you talking to other towns also in Connecticut besides the Fairfield background? Or is it just Farmington at this point?
Oh, uh, no. I mean, my, my interest is piqued obviously by wanting to build an ADU on the property. I mean, if you were to see the property, first of all, everyone thinks it's the house when it's not, because it's, the house is down by the lake. And when you tell them, no, it's not, they all assumed it's already rented because I think for some time there was a lot of back and forth because it was used as some sort of studio.
Okay.
Uh, so I only talked to, uh, town of Fairfield, uh, because, you know, I know the town planner or the second, the assistant town planner and just to get a feel for, you know, is this under use of ADUs, a, uh, an anomaly or not? And, and it may be, and, and I think that would probably be the very next step, or at least done in conjunction if there was a working group. And, you know, if you want to volunteer me, um, I won't, I won't charge you like the consultant. I did speak to your consultant also. Uh, just to get a handle on, you know, is this a, is this like, this is how ADUs work everywhere? And it's starting to look like that because when, when people actually, so for example, you need the, um, you need to have the lot coverage. You need to have the setback from the main house. You can't build in the front. You can't build on the sides. Um, it's, uh, you're constrained by the size of your existing house. It could be thirty to fifty percent. That, so you will, you're winding up building maybe a six, seven hundred square foot, um, ADU. And even I find it hard to build one for less than two hundred thousand. So when you take, when you just do the numbers on it, people say, oh, it just, you know, so they pull the permit and then they get the, and, you know, they go through all of that and they're like, this, this isn't worth it. And I think that's part of the, uh, issue. It would be good if towns, um, incentivized people to do it, um, by tax breaks and so forth. But that's a whole other issue when it gets complicated. Most towns have shied away from making these zones specific or have to be affordable or whatever. I mean, that's, that's sort of an add-on. Uh, Fairfield has a little bit of an incentive by allowing people to put, uh, more than three people or more than two people if it's affordable. Uh, but that really hasn't attracted anybody.
Okay. Uh, let me, uh, turn it over to the commissioners for just immediate, uh, questions or feedback. Go ahead, Matt.
Yeah. Hey, thank, thank you, Mr. Galvin for joining us. So ju- based on your last comment about a two hundred thousand dollar, you know, do you think this, these units fall into the affordable housing issue we have here in the state of Connecticut? Or is this more of just trying to make our land use a little more or less restrictive?
I think it's both. I mean, I, I, I did notice that in the Affordable Housing Plan, it did not specify, uh, any incentives to make these affordable housing. And I, you know, I'm not sure what the numbers are. I, I, I'm going to guess, maybe it's twelve to fourteen hundred dollars for a one-bedroom rental under the Affordable Act, Affordable, um, uh, definition. Uh, Shannon would know better, but yeah, if you build a two hundred thousand dollar unit, and I'm not saying you couldn't slap together something for a hundred thousand, uh, you know, but by the time you do all the, uh, sewer and water and everything else, it gets two hundred is probably a pretty good, you know, conservative number to work with. And then you think about what the mortgage would be on that. And the town, one of the pluses is that the town gets more tax income, probably about two thousand, three thousand featured these units a year. Uh, and then you add on the extra taxes the homeowner pays because of the, um, because now it's, it's got a rental. Nobody's making any money at thirteen hundred dollars, uh, under the affordable. So nobody will build them. Um, but if the town was really wanted to add incentivized, so for example, if a developer builds a department complex, he's incentivized by, you know, density or whatever variances you give him, the homeowner doesn't have that. Um, but it might be, you know, if you make it affordable, we won't, um, we won't tax it or even give you a tax credit. So it could be both. It, it could be plain vanilla, the way it is in California and most states. Um, I think even the, um, I think even the, uh, this actually was that twenty-one, twenty-nine or whatever it is that, that we had to opt out of.
Yes.
I think that specified that you couldn't, you couldn't, um, make them, right? Um, be affordable. I always think of affordable with the large A, meaning you gotta be income guidelines and small A, meaning we don't have any of these and the fact that you build them will sort of drive down prices. Um, so it, yeah, it, it, that's, that's all part of the ongoing discussion where towns have it. My sense is that towns have looked at that and fallen out of it, saying, nobody's going to build it if you do that. There's no incentive unless we put the incentive in there. We don't have the money to make it an incentive. So.
You're good, Matt.
Yeah, I'm good. Thank you.
Patrick comments for?
Um, just, yeah, just a comment. Interesting. He said two hundred thousand and that doesn't include land. You know, that's just the unit itself. Um.
But you're building on existing.
On exist, right. I mean.
Ourself.
Yeah. So I mean, yeah.
Yeah. So, so it runs the gamut. Um, the, and, and you'll hear all sorts of numbers. I remember in the good old days, it was, uh, you tried to keep it under a hundred dollars a square foot. Well, um.
Very good old days. Long time ago.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Uh, so I think, you know, I think three hundred dollars a square foot is, is an aggressive number to use for building. So if you're building a, you know, six hundred square foot unit, it gets up there, you know, fees, uh, when I built properties, I would allow five percent for fees. Now it's got to be ten percent. Um, uh, you know, the building code, whether you're building a six hundred square foot unit, uh, and, you know, especially in California, all the tie-down work that you have to do. There's, um, the last house I did, I spent almost three thousand dollars just on those tie-down hardware, not the labor to install them. So all of that's gotten driven pri- and the price, you know, sheet of plywood, remember the good old days when it was thirty bucks? Now it's like ninety. It came down from a hundred and thirty. So, yeah, it's, it's three hundred would be a safe number and that's two hundred thousand dollars. I mean, building new. Now, in our case, because I kind of know what I'm doing and it's an existing structure, it's already been finished, but all the framing, but it needs to be rewired, replumbed, better insulation and so forth. It's probably closer to, uh, two hundred dollars a square foot.
Okay, thank you. Um, what's your reaction to Mr. Galvin's stuff?
Yeah, no questions. Just thank you for bringing back to the forefront. It gives us some things to think about for sure and appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Liz?
Uh, I will echo that. There's nothing specific right offhand, but, uh, yeah, it's, it's it's an interesting subject, something that we need to, to think more about. So thanks for bringing it up.
All right, and James?
Uh, yeah, there's an echo in here. Um, so, so similarly, um, yeah, I mean, it's not something that I know a ton about. Um, so, yeah, thanks, thanks for the discussion. Thanks for the time. Um, look forward to potentially continuing the discussion at a later date.
And Matthew?
I'll be the final echo.
All right.
Yeah, pretty much the same thing. I think it's an important component, um, but it's not a panacea for our affordable housing issue. All right, it's just a part of it.
Yeah, it's, it, it's the double-edged sword of ADUs. If somebody said like, done right, they're invisible. Uh, and they're pretty easy to fold into the code. Um, if, unless you start making all sorts of, you know, other, uh, but most, most, most jurisdictions don't. It's just that's your zone. You can have an ADU. You gotta abide by the setbacks. You gotta abide by the lot coverage, sixteen feet high. So it's one, so it, it does some plain vanilla plans out there that you see going on. So that's the night, the good part. The bad part is no, it's not a panacea. As a matter of fact, um, housing advocates who really want more public housing will deride ADUs as being just a Band-Aid that towns come up with to say they're doing something. So, not everybody, but that's the only really negative thing I've heard about ADUs that for towns that actually have them and get them built is that, eh, you know, it was a nothing burger. So I, I think there's a, I think there's a way of doing it. And I know Shannon, uh, suggested just rolling out with, uh, make the existing ones that are under the same roof line. How, you know, that are in houses, uh, uh, allowed to be for, uh, rented to non-related parties. And I think that's okay. That's probably where you're going to really get nothing. New Haven did that and in two years they had zero people take them up on it. Um, I think, oh, and by the way, one interesting thing, uh, that came up when I was speaking to a town planner, uh, here in California is that they had had, they were already looking at the issue because they had three or four fires in illegal ADUs. And so it real, now, now I'm sure not everybody comes forward because they don't want to spend the money or whatever. But he said that three quarters of the first applications for, for existing ADUs for people to bring them up the code. So that's, that's a nice, um, sort of side benefit. And, and that'll certainly apply to whatever move you make on your existing ADUs or, you know, ADUs and attached units. Uh, you know, we'd be naive to think that everybody is, that every ADU in Farmington is uh, within the house and rented to a relative or a worker. I mean, it's just, you know, the nature of things. Um, so it gets, it gets, it's almost a moratorium for people who are doing things that they shouldn't be doing.
It, it's a cousin, right? Uncle, cousin or uncle, never mind.
Yeah, well, I, I, I think the commission should have a meeting every month where all ADUs have to bring in their genealogy charts and
For a minute.
And birth certificates. DNA testing.
Yep. So thank you for, um, your document. We appreciate it. I'm sure you will be following this topic for, in Farmington for sure. Um, we do have to decide, right, what we're doing with.
Well, the moratorium itself, right?
So, yep.
So, okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you. Sure.
Going back to?
So, yes, so going back to, um, moratorium.
Yes.
And if there is an appetite for extending at all, um, if there is, my recommendation is to not go past October first. Act, and, and the reason being is October first starts, I'll say the formal campaign season, um, with elections in November and it doesn't, you know, I think the moratorium exists sufficient time, oh, hopefully. The intent is sufficient time to, uh, have the discussions. And then if we're still finishing out a public hearing into October or November, I think that's fine. Um, but I think, um, you know, if we're going to be having some active conversations, we got to for October first in order to get anything meaningful accomplished with the group of you.
Yep.
Um, before that changes or not, or whatever, however that mix shakes out, uh, for January.
Yep.
So.
It's shaking for sure. Um, so, um, I know, I don't even know what that means. So we have no, no meeting in July, right? Or a break in July?
No, so August, August typically there's, I mean, so there's two meetings in July.
And then.
We've got July seventeenth and July thirty-first. So if we are going to extend the moratorium, we have to have it on the agenda no later than the July seventeenth meeting.
Yeah. I just, I guess where I'm going with it and it's, um, you're supposed to read my mind. Sorry about that is, I, we go through these meetings, I guess probably did this, um, you know, last few months have been rough, right, with the all big projects, I, just my bandwidth, like I, I wish we could have a meeting just to talk about this. Not saying no other business.
Okay.
I don't know.
Well, I can try, I can try, and I know I had put out the doodle poll and then mine may, like, may just, it was.
Exploded.
Silly. So a, a, again, part of getting another meeting in
Yep.
involves your staff having the opportunity to adequately prepare for the meeting and it just didn't happen in May. Um, so happy to do doodle poll again and we can do, uh, June and July and see what's available. Um, I'm happy to get an extra meeting in. And then we can decide to.
Be more productive.
Um.
Yeah, because if we're doing this after, like.
Okay, yep, all right. Um, six, do you, would you even, would a six thirty, I don't, I know some of you are coming from where, I don't know what everybody's personal schedules are. So is six thirty okay? Is a start time or would you prefer leaving it at seven?
I would, I would go back to six to.
So can I just ask a larger, so we don't think we can get anything done by July thirty-first and like.
We'd have to have a public hearing, Matt.
So.
So if we're going to change a zone regulation, so we haven't even had enough time to have.
Do that, so we can't do that. I don't even know if we've got a working session. We've heard, we've heard about inclusionary zoning. We've heard about ADUs. We've heard about a, a, a lot of the things in the Affordable Housing Plan already. So I think, can't we just start putting like specifics on paper at the next meeting and say, okay, what, what is, we, we know what inclusionary zoning is, right? It's over five or six houses, twelve percent or a fee in lieu. And let's just start putting those numbers up on paper.
But I think we should start. So I'm back to.
Unless this, unless this, again, my question is that the staff, we don't have time to do that.
To draft, so you would need to draft the text amendment.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You folks should look at it really before we have and even accept it, right? So you should at least look at it and then we would need to note, accept the application and run a public hearing. So no, you're not going to get that done.
Okay, so.
So we would need a meeting to discuss what that text amendment should be consistent.
Right, because you need to, right, and it's different things, right? So do we want to change the accessory dwelling? Uh, the, the current, the accessory apartment regulation as it is, lift the, the rental requirement. And what does that look like? Do you want to consider, consider the detached accessory dwelling units and the pros and cons of that? And I've been in touch with CROG. I'm trying to get the, so as part of the Public Act twenty-one, twenty-nine, CROG did a survey for our area towns, right? So these are the towns that are all part of CROG. There's thirty-eight of us. Um, and they said, you know, who opted in and who opted out? The reason why and do you already have it, uh, uh, detached accessory dwelling unit reg? How many have you had constructed and whatnot? So it also gives us towns to start to chat with then about how, or look at their regulation and then also chat with to find out how much this, this is. Um, I think we do need to get a handle on how much we think there may be from an accessory dwelling unit in who, wh- whether it's parents moving out or children moving back in. Um, and schoolchildren, um, but as part of all of this now, I am now on a Board of Ed redistricting committee, which Board of Ed has to redistrict every so often anyhow. Um, and there's an organic with our subdivisions, there's an organic expectation that, uh, they built into their projections of thirty, roughly thirty to thirty-five new residences coming on board. And then there's other algorithms I look at to figure out how many children that really equates to. Well, with having a thousand apartment units come on board, right? And now they have now aligned that it almost looks like they could peak at the same time. Whether they actually all get there, there's other things in the universe that are impacting that. I, all I can say is I'm wildly popular at these meetings at the moment. Wildly popular. So, um, you know, but I think that's a real consideration that if we're going to change something that allows single-family residences to then have a whole nother dwelling unit on their property and it can be rented out and we're not going to put a restriction that it has to be a family member, like, these are all things that really need to be thought of. We're not just gonna.
I, to me, the ADU doesn't necessarily go hand in hand with the moratorium. That's more for the vis- subdivisions, right?
It was the whole thing. So it's, it was a moratorium, so it, it was a moratorium. You're, you're right, yes. So it was a moratorium on, on.
It was a moratorium to give us all more time.
So.
To do and having, uh, unless you think like the town staff, do we need to expand the moratorium to give the town staff more time to start looking at these issues, right?
It's both because you folks need to have a appropriate platform and understanding basis to make the decisions. And it was affordable housing. So the ADUs really are organic or for affordable housing, or as John referred to it as a little A, right? It's not the capital A affordable housing where we're getting, it's going to hit our, our ten percent threshold.
No way.
Both are important and both needs to be kept in mind. Um, and we may not chip, we, we may not chip at both of them. Part of it for me is just to, to try to get a pause so we can get an education platform, which has been almost futile this, and here to date, so. Um, but I mean, there's documents that are still up on that, that work site that everybody has access to. There's been questions asked and answered that are up on the, the cloud.
Yeah.
So, um, so it's there, but I think, um, and know that we do not have to do a regulation change under the, the moratorium, like the regulation change can come after.
Okay.
Um, it's just whether or not you still want to pause in place. I, I mean, really, that's all it is. So we could still do additional workset. We can let the moratorium, the, the moratorium was, the purpose of it was to try to get a pause. Didn't work as well as I thought it might have because we got a few other things, but that's.
Units during the moratorium, right?
So it's. Came in beforehand.
Right, so.
I didn't think that six months wasn't enough, right? Uh, but just whatever. But that's, uh, neither here or there. I, I would continue, I would hope we continue with the moratorium and really get some thing done. But, um, is that realistic?
Is it realistic? I think so, at least for, I think things for like accessory dwelling unit, um, the apartments and the ADUs and deciding where we want to go with that, I think it is. With respect to inclusionary zoning, I think we can get to a point where we have a deeper conversation and an understanding, do we want to start, do we want to start to do a zoning regulation on that? Do we want to leave it, see where we get with accessory dwelling? I think we get to a point where we can tier some of the priorities.
Okay.
And say, okay, yes, we, we like this or we like a few aspects of this, but we don't like whatever X, Y, and Z. Um, so I guess it depends on how you choose to measure the progress.
Right.
For me, not everything is a whole scale change, the regulation. For me, it was an education platform and trying to take the Affordable Housing Plan and say, okay, here's some deeper understanding of some of these things within the Affordable Housing Plan. And these are from a, uh, priority, like we're going to take care of. We have them this year and then we're going to sit and see how that, what it does and then do three the following year or whatever the case may be.
Could, could the outcome be, uh, a roadmap that would get us towards?
That's what, okay, that's, yeah.
Basically, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, I guess it's a start. I mean, I know there are plenty of towns in our state that don't even have a plan, you know?
There are, yep, there are a handful that haven't, are delayed in getting it adopted.
But it is important, right? And there's like nothing, nothing affordable. Um, so I, I like your idea. So July, what does July, we need to make it an agenda item to extend? Is that what you're saying?
Uh, so we would need to make it an agenda. I would put it on as new business to extend.
The moratorium.
June twenty-sixth to the July seventeen.
Well, I can put it on, on either one. It's just the July seventeenth is the drop. If it's not on July seventeenth, there, there's no appetite to ex- I mean, quite honestly, as your town planner, I don't really want to put something on the agenda that you're going to say no to anyway. So that's kind of why I'm asking. If there's no appetite to extend, then I won't bother putting it on the agenda. Um.
Matt is in.
Well, no, and that's, it, it doesn't have to be unanimous and, and everybody has their own thought process on it. That's fine.
I mean, we're delaying development in the town because we want to try to give us all more time to do what we've, look how many units we've approved during the moratorium. Now, listen, I'm in favor of the moratorium and I'm in favor of affordable housing from a practical perspective.
Yeah.
Where there's people involved in this industry, that's their jobs and we're, we're preventing them from doing their jobs because of meeting time and times, we don't have time. So just again, trying to think of a holistic approach for everyone in town. I'm in favor of affordable housing. We, and if we can't do anything related to affordable housing in the next month or couple of months, I don't think we need to do, we need to solve of the affordable housing in our regulation. Because I'm not sure we're going to be able to do that in six months anyway. So again, just trying to think sort of larger picture here. I think a lot of us think the inclusionary zoning and we, the whole point of moratorium is, a new development comes online and we have no way to direct a developer to make that inclusionary or affordable, right? Or fee in lieu.
Hmm.
So can we just, can we focus on that? Because that's what's tied to the moratorium and extend the moratorium three months. And can we just check that one off instead of a fuller, comprehensive one?
I think that's what Shannon was saying, wasn't it? Let's go till October one instead of the full six months. That's three months.
Yeah. September, I, I agree. I think if.
So you're, you would vote yes to extend it?
I would vote yes to extend. Because I, I just, I, I feel one more time and, and I, I all agree. I mean, I got business, I got business.
We, we. We still have time, we can do it without, we don't need. We still have time, we could do it without, we don't need a moratorium to act or not act. I think the old, the point of the moratorium is. We're missing, in theory, we're missing out on affordable units. Because.
The affordable, the moratorium didn't apply to any affordable housing.
But it applies to.
But it could, right, so if we, if we, if we open up the, if we stop the moratorium today.
Yep.
And we accept a new application tomorrow.
For a.
For a twenty house subdivision, we have no ability to.
Mandate.
To mandate inclusionary zoning or ma- mandate.
Correct.
And Lou, that's my.
Right.
Thought process on why we did the moratorium.
Right. Right.
So can we just focus on that one specific one and do it sooner than later, not six months?
Versus like the ADUs and all of that.
Correct.
Got it, okay. Is that enough? Time for you to pull it together, right? Or no?
So we're talking, I am not pulling together an inclusionary zoning regulation in three weeks.
Right.
That you can have a public hearing by the end of.
So we saw.
It's got, if it's, no, I guess that's my, back to my first question, is do we need till? The whole six months until January twenty twenty four?
I said, uh, I said, no, first.
No, October first.
So the moratorium is gonna be three months?
Yes, the extension would be to October first.
Yep.
I'm sorry, I thought that's what I.
Election stuff and all that.
Right. There was no sense.
Having the public hearing before our, our first, having, having done by October first.
Correct.
Having at least all the discussions.
Right.
In a platform ready now, whether or not a hearing continued past October first, but the moratorium, moratorium would lift by October first.
Yeah, but we gotta, sorry, nothing could be done by October first, it's gotta trickle in after that.
I have no idea.
Okay.
I have no idea.
Okay, well, that's fair. Yeah, that's fair.
So, I mean, that's. So I'm not saying you can't speak.
Yeah, okay.
I'm saying. I have.
Yeah.
You know, there could be a pent up, there could be, you know, six developers out there and ready to, ready to. To submit, but there also could be nothing. It could be crickets for a month or, I doubt it, but.
I don't think it's gonna be.
Right, exactly, but I mean, you can't, we can't predict.
Right.
Or we can't say with certainty, I guess is a better way to put it.
So.
So I think we need our three months.
I think for perspective too, so that the commission understands, so. Once these are approved and they leave your plate, right? They come back around and live multiple lives with Mr. Sierra and I.
Yeah.
Multiple lives, uh complete with, we have some of the larger. Housing developments, they're now in and we're reviewing. Conservation easements and access easements and final conditions of approval. And engineering comments that we put as conditions of approval. That for whatever reason are not. Done to a. Complete. Standard.
Hmm.
Or conservation easements are being tinkered with. There's one of the developments, we have reviewed easement documents and there's. Four to five easement documents that we're reviewing for a particular development. We've been reviewing the easement documents since February.
Because they cannot get it right? Hannah?
There is an inability to come to a consensus and the, the. Document has been changed from our standard to a point that we don't feel we can agree to it.
Wow.
Okay, so that's.
No.
An example of like, so you're seeing one lens of this, so. These things come back and live multiple and then once we get there, then there's the construction and and imagination.
Listen to be.
That's, so I, I just, so you understand.
No, to be, listen, to be clear, I know your office is busy, I'm just trying to get a sense of like. Maybe needs to be longer, right? Like, do we need even more time? I just don't know the time.
Not gonna be here.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
So it does, it serves me no purpose cuz January one, I'm starting with a new group.
I just, okay, no, I know.
But it just wasn't, it doesn't make any sense and and then at that point, all of your extra free time, you're starting to do campaigning and whatnot. And quite honestly, I don't think any of us need this in the middle of the campaign.
Right.
Right? This isn't a camp, this should not be a campaign thing.
Yeah, if we don't want it to be a campaign thing, we have to be done by July then.
Well, well, that's.
Right? So.
Is, is there a?
That's my point.
Is there the, uh, something that's the most bang for the buck that would have the most impact? That we could address in the shortest amount of time, like. Fee, fees in lieu of, or I, I don't know how intensive that would be. Is there something that, you know, you could say is, you know? Significant enough that would have some impact, but also wouldn't be a six month endeavor? Is there anything like that?
So again, I'd go back to the Affordable Housing Plan, right? So that's the, the platform that we, that's been set. Um. A- and for me, the, the easiest ones. For implementation with the. Um. I'll say the least risk, cuz we have to understand the cost benefit, right? So we need to understand. If we go and we do, just like with the moratorium, right? There was an action and there was a reaction, right? And so we have to be mindful of those actions and reactions. So the lifting the rental for the accessory dwelling units. Quite honestly, there probably, one, there's probably people that have accessory apartments that aren't permitted.
Hmm.
Two, there's certainly people that have accessory apartments that are probably renting them to somebody that is not a relative or a nanny or, or. Some other domestic care, right? So do we lift that in that? And we know, you folks know how many accessory apartment regulations we got or, or applications we get, right? There's a. Decent number of them that comes through enough that you all know that term and you know you've all looked at an accessory. Reg apartment application. So I think that helps with our organic, right, the organic affordability. The detached of affordable, um, I'm sorry, the detached accessory dwelling. I will be completely honest, staff has been really reserved, not just me, miss Bruce has, Garrett had, it's like. This makes us a little edgy.
Hmm.
Mr. Galvin has put a decent amount of time and that Mr. Galvin has been incredibly persistent.
Hmm.
Articulate. Um, enough that I felt it warranted him to come speak with you this evening. Is there probably somewhere a platform for a compromise? Do I think it's appropriate in every single zone? Absolutely not. I think some of our lots are just too small in Farmington and the density is already to a point.
Hmm.
Where we already have some. Neighbor constraints because of that or neighbor edginess because of the density that. I don't think it's appropriate in every neighborhood uh in every zone. Is there an ability to start to, do we test the water in the R eighty, maybe the R forty? Maybe. We can look at that and then we can do some research with some of our, again, CROG has already pulled together some of this data. Which I need to get the final document, I emailed them, I don't have the final document. When I get it, I will send it out to you. That shows you what our neighboring communities within CROG did. And I say neighboring cuz it includes Coventry, but it includes Avon. I'm not really sure how they set these boundaries, but we're not getting into that. Um, those are easy. Could probably with a he, real big, I, I don't even know I could get those done. I, I could get the, the accessory, the in-house accessory apartment, lift the rental, that's easy, we can have that done by July. End of July, the additional detached dwelling unit. Again, I think we need, we need to start looking at Matt, okay, if we're gonna do R eighty and R forty. What neighborhoods do those? And is it, if it's an R forty cluster, does that count? Cuz that's a smaller lot. Right? Or is it just straight up R forty?
Hmm.
And it needs to be really specific and the wording of these things really matter. Um, the inclusionary zoning and fee and lieu? Yes. That's a whole nother level of complexity and additional research that's needed to make sure that as we start to structure this, we start to get some things in place that. That work and we have to involve our finance director as well because that fee and lieu program has to come in. And the parameters have to, to work. Um, so that, that money, if the fee and lieu is being utilized, has somewhere to go. And we know how it's being used. It's also gonna require a change to the town ordinance cuz right now. The way the ordinance is worded, it's just for new homes, it's not for maintenance. Right? And I think we had talked about that, the big ticket maintenance items, we wanna try to be able to include those. But then again, it's how, so. Again, if there's a whole nother Shannon, that would have been done for you folks.
Yeah, no doubt.
And I know, and I, and. No offense is being taken, it's just trying to figure out, like, how do we start to peel this and, and get these? Really unwound enough so that. We've got something meaningful to work with.
I, I would say for me, if you're looking for prioritization from the commission, I think ADUs is second. I mean, I'm not sure. How much that helps the affordability issue, I think, you know, eight. Permits in all of Fairfield or two and all of New Haven, that's, that's Mr. Galvin gave. I mean, I think inclusionary zoning, including the fee and lieu is a really big. Could be a really big opportunity for Farmington. And I think if we focus on that as. Wave one here and if the new commission has to focus on wave two, like that's how it goes, these. People on these commissions sort of come and go as we see here, uh even on this specific commission, that, that's just my personal take. If, if we gotta prioritize all those things, that seems like a lot of work and discussion and even in three months' time, right? When one month is already off. So um, the, I don't know, that's it.
I feel like we need to set the road first. Like, we need to know what all the things are out there and set a roadmap, otherwise we're just gonna be.
Would.
Talking about it. Bouncing around.
I respectfully disagree, like I think the time is now to put something on paper, have those discussions.
Do it, Matt, without like.
I don't like the full picture. No, but we, we've heard about inclusionary zoning and we've heard about fee and lieu, let's have those conversations with the finance director. And the housing authority to see what that looks like on paper for our town to just to do. I think that is the roadmap, like we have this roadmap from two thousand twenty one that you all put together, which I appreciate. So again, that's why I'm just trying to kind of move this along if you wanna get this all done in six months.
I, okay, so I'm, I too am concerned about affordable housing, but I think my bigger worry is probably more with where you are, Matt. Or whatever piece of land that's left. I mean, look at the storage unit and I know we voted for it, but like. People are looking at Farmington from other states, looking at opportunities, what can they bring to Farmington? Because um, we do have some land, I don't know even, I can't even, I know one third is open space, I don't know how much. Developable land we have, but that worries me a lot, like what is coming? Is it, is it another huge subdivision that we, we already know our roads can support any of it? Um, so I agree, I wish we, I just don't know about the timing of it, Matt, I don't.
No, and I agree with the, the moratorium part and, and ha- continuing to have that moratorium, so developers. We, we, we wanna put our new rules in place. To prevent, you know, the developers from coming in. I just think for me, we gotta start. Moving a little quicker to putting the real things on paper and that's, again, I respect the staff's time. To, cuz they're the ones that they're gonna have to do that. It's easy for me to see here in the second and fourth Monday of the month to say that, but. It maybe the specific discussions on specific items of the plan.
Yeah.
Instead of like a larger sort of roadmap. With, with all those pieces Shannon laid out, I think, I, I, just for me, as like a planning part of it would seem challenge, challenging.
And Matt, when I say a roadmap, all I'm talking about is what the priorities are. So what are we gonna work on right now versus what are we gonna work on with the next commission? I don't think we can. Start having the conversations by just picking one and jumping.
Well, but we have a moratorium in place, right? So you have eyeballs on our town, right? So we paused for the developers, right? And so what are we doing about it? Are we just lifting it, saying, all right? We're back to normal or are we taking this opportunity to look at development and smart development? I know these are just words, but. I, we already started them all by saying, hey, timeout.
Well, I think we have to come out of the moratorium without, with at least one action that was accomplished during the moratorium. Cuz that's, that's not gonna be a good look.
Correct.
Right, we, we said stop all development, but we didn't do anything.
Right.
You know, so we have to do something.
It would, it would be a missed opportunity, right?
Hmm.
So is, is the ADU, is that like, is that it? Whatever seventy units or whatever we have, I, I don't know. I wish we could dig in and do something bigger, like, you know, like what Matt was suggesting. Um.
Okay. It sounds in general.
We're on the same page.
Sounds in general, there's an appetite to extend it.
Yes.
To October first.
Hmm.
I think.
Let me get a poll out to see if we can get some work sessions in.
Okay.
It sounds like a six P M. Start time is okay across the board, so that helps cuz it's getting us an extra hour. Without being crazy late. Maybe we'll plan, plan agendas for the work sessions to run two hours. This way, if we run to the three, like we're chatty or we're onto something and we go to nine, then it's still not crazy late. Um. Understanding that it's an extra meeting for all of you and y'all got other things to do uh the next mornings. Um. I don't wanna do these, start at six and go to eleven for a work session.
Um, I second that.
Well, I'd rather do more, like a handful of more frequent ones if we can, so we'll see, um, we'll put it out there and, and see. Um, and then. Get specific agendas and maybe. I can start to put some framework together for what. That looks like, um. So that we've got. A goal like, all right, so if we can, if I can get four or five work sessions in between June, July and maybe around the first week of August. Depending on, you know, whatever folks availability is, like, let's see what we can get. And start to put a framework together for what those meetings will accomplish. Um. So that. Then when we finish that set. Then we can say, okay, we're gonna try and staff during the month of August can work on some text amendments or ha- ideally. And then come into September with. Something concrete to work with our drafts for folks to look at.
Okay. Let's roll with it.
That sounds like a really good plan.
Right?
I like that, I do.
Okay. You guys good? All right, well. And if it's more, you know, sometimes it's not, not everyone may be available, but we have a big group, right?
No, what I will, I'll, so we've got, there's. Eight of you now. I'm gonna, we're not gonna hold, I'm not doing a work session if there's not at least half, I'm gonna say we need half, we need at least. Four out of the eight in attendance, is that an agreement?
Yeah. Yeah. Oh, God. And uh, Patrick was in a, on a, on a long break, so.
Patrick's like double duty. And what we will, we'll do, um, we'll zoom, we'll do uh the recordings, so if folks aren't here, then they can.
That works, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Matt, for pushing for the plan.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right.
Can I ask one quick question, Chen?
And Shannon.
No, I'm done, there's no more. No, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay, I heard that, I heard the guy who, who bought, who owned the mill building died.
Yeah.
Um, my husband told me that right.
Yeah, we're gonna, I'd like to adjourn the meeting, please.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah. So we need to motion for um to approve minutes, please, May twenty.
Make a motion to approve the minutes for the May twenty second, twenty twenty three Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
All right. We are good, ten fifty?